This is the special meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board taking place today, February 4th at 6:00 PM. Madam Chairwoman, you can call the meeting to order.
The following meeting is being conducted by electronic mains in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended on 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during the state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and City of Asbury Park website. A copy of this notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidance of the virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time, please use your raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial *9 if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when your turn to speak. If at any time during your question you are deemed to be out of line or out of topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public meeting session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded for your viewing pleasure on AP TV. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Union, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention of all. Alright, we have one subject to discuss tonight. And Michelle Alonso is here from the city regarding zoning modifications.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, I'll call a roll. Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
John Moore?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax? Absent. Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Rick Lambert? Absent. Barbara Krzec?
Yeah.
Eric Galipo?
Here.
Okay, I'd like Michelle Alonso, Donna Miller, and Michael Sullivan to please unmute yourselves, raise your right hands. I'll swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Michelle Alonso, please state your name and tell us your affiliation with the city.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment, and I'm also a licensed professional planner.
Thank you. Donna Miller, please.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Thank you. Michael Sullivan?
Michael Sullivan, Clerk at Hinton, Board Planner.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, it's all yours.
Alright, Ms. Alonso?
So I am going to start my share screen, but before I do that, I will tell the board members and members of the public, we are here tonight to review and comment on zoning amendments. This is what I called zoning amendments, part two, because the planning board has referred to municipal council part of the zoning amendments. But tonight, we're going to be reviewing amendments to the zone districts, conditional uses, parking definitions, community development standards, and the zoning map. So I'm going to start, haha, hopefully successfully, or maybe not successfully, doing this share screen.
Michelle, excuse me for a second, Michelle.
Yes.
Before you get started, do you want to take questions as they come up, or do you want us to hold questions until the end of your presentation?
Um, I think we should do it by section, meaning after I, 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 and not meaning like the whole district section, but the smaller sections. So we can do it that way.
Okay.
Give me a second because, oh, I think I know. Well, why? I wanted to show this screen. Okay, good. Okay. So this is amendment to the zone districts, and this reflects what was recommended by the master plan. Oh, great. Sorry, um, I lost everyone for a minute. This reflects the, mostly the, which this, this board and the council already adopted, the consolidations of the B1, B2 into 1B district and standard, and the NC district, and standards that would pertain to all the commercial districts excluding redevelopment plan areas. This section is also a modification of the bulk standards. So I'm going to go straight to the zoning chart because this is part of the meat and potatoes. This is, these are the bulk standards with the changes. And one of the most significant changes is that the, we increased building coverage from 25% to 30% for the R1, the R2 and the R3, and that change came about mostly from what we've seen in zoning board cases, and also to give us a little bit more flexibility in permitting people to have items like sheds in their backyards. We now have an previous coverage requirement while we didn't have one before. It's 65% in the residential districts, 80% in the commercial districts, the B districts, and 90% in the light industrial districts, which is not a large portion of the city. I also failed to note that building coverage for the business district and the light industrial is at 80%, which is not, again, really not a change from what the current zoning is. One of the recommendations in the master plan this time around, and actually the master plan the last time around, was to eliminate the FAR and the density requirements of the R1 district. So that is done here. The density remain, units per acre remain the same for the R2. The R3, it's 50 dwelling units per acre. The B, 40 dwelling units per acre. And we also kept the FAR for the R3 at 1.5, the B 2.5, and the industrial district 1, which is typical for industrial buildings. So before I go on to the next section, and here, I'm just going to scroll here. You can see the strikeouts of the old chart, of what we had done. And back to the, to the current chart, I think this is, because this is such a big part of zone, of zoning. You know, this is really the meat and potatoes. If any board member has questions at this time regarding this section, I think we should take them now.
Jim Henry, I have a question, Michelle.
Okay.
In the R3 zone, you permit 1 and 2 families and the multifamily, correct?
Yes.
Doesn't R2 cover the 1 and 2 family? Is there a conflict between that concept? Shouldn't the 1 and 2 family be in the R2 zone?
No, because what currently with our zoning and what we thought should be continuation, if you're in the R3 zone, you have the option to build anyone, anywhere from the 1 family to the multifamily. So, you know, there's existing 1 families in the zones, so we don't want to zone people out.
Okay, I'm just questioning that. And the other thing I'm questioning is, in the R2, you have a, it appears to be 17 dwelling units per acre?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, those are, that's my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, this is Eric Galipo. Thank you, Michelle and Mark, for your hard work on this. It's appreciated. I do have a couple of questions. So am I reading this correctly that in the R1 and R2 zones and R3, the front yard setback, the minimum front yard setback will be replaced with a requirement to match the prevailing setback?
It, yes, which is something that is with many of the cases that go before the zoning board, that's something they take into consider, well, you are on the zoning board, you take into consideration as well. Well, it's more about neighborhood context rather than saying, setting an arbitrary number for setback.
Mm-hmm. And is there any, where do you specify? The porch versus the building?
You mean in the, in terms of the setback?
Yeah. Where is it measured from?
Right. Michael or Donna could correct me. It's in the definition section.
Okay, so it's dealt with though, and it's very clear. The front yard setback is measured from the property line to the porch or the property line to the building?
Or.
But this is. Donna?
Hi, Donna.
Hi. So it's two things. We are revising the definition for porch. So it clarifies which part of the structure is actually exempt from that measurement, but also strengthens that it, you know, needs to be a traditional style porch. You know, it's going to be covered, it has to have a certain depth. It's, you know, not going to be a cheat porch on the building to qualify. And so when you go into that definition section, you look at porch. And then also when we get deeper into these zoning amendments in the supplemental regulations, it talks about the exceptions to the yards. So like things like gutters and downspouts and chimneys and things like that. I believe it's also addressed there to some extent.
Permitted projections?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, and as long as that's covered, so it, and am I correct that the setback is measured to the building face and not the porch?
That's right.
That's, oh, great.
As long as it's a porch.
As long as, yes, and you've clarified what's a porch and what's not. Now, if a, do, I know many porches in the, in town have been enclosed and made part of the floor area of a house. Will that be permitted?
Well, that would be, that would be not complying with the definition of porch, and so it would be an existing nonconformity.
I mean, you can't do that. You can't convert an existing porch to enclosed space under the new regulations, unless it's beyond the setback of prevailing.
Correct.
Block.
Right.
Okay, great. So, um, and I, am I, do I understand correctly that the R1 and the R2, the R2 zone permits 1 and 2 family?
Yes.
Okay, and the R3 zone is where you can get three or more units as of right?
Yes, but we still kept our minimum lots, minimum.
Right, right.
Right.
In accordance with all of the relevant recommendations. So a 3 family starts in the R3 zone. 3 families, one more, starts in the R3 zone.
Right, but if you don't have the minimum lot size for the multifamily, you can't do the multifamily.
And do any of these districts have, was there any consideration given in the R1, 2, or 3 districts to detached dwelling units? And what, how is that incorporated here?
We, when we, I scroll, when I get to the uses.
Okay.
We, we changed that from what's in the current ordinance. Meaning it's, it, I believe we, we took care of that, the problem of people needing to seek a variance if they're an attached, or a de-variance if they're an attached structure.
And will, if we're in, in an R3 zone that conforms to the basic lot, to the minimum lot standards, will you allow detached accessory dwelling units or more than one principal structure on the same lot?
I believe the idea, no, it's still every, everything in one building. In other words, you still would not be able to convert a garage into a residential unit without triggering a bulk variance, if that's the question.
It is. It, it, it is. And I, you know, I, I myself think that detached, small detached dwelling units are sort of an intrinsic part of many of our neighborhoods. There's many multiple dwelling units on the same lot. And I'm curious if there was any dislike, was that excluded? Or what was the basis for excluding daddies?
Well, I'll explain. I, as a planner, I'm, I should say, as a planner who has worked in urban areas, I am, I, I'm not a big fan of the dwelling unit and the accessory structure for a few reasons. One is the R1 now covers a larger part of the city. We've eliminated the R1A zone. And now it covers a larger part of the city. And so that means there's a wider range of properties in the R1 in that. And if you allowed an accessory structure to be a unit, you may see not the most desirous.
Right. I wouldn't suggest that it belongs in the R1, but perhaps when you're allowing multifamily units, we, multifamily. So in the R3, has there been consideration for the allowance of detached accessory dwelling units or secondary units above new garages?
No, because we don't get that many applications for, for, for new. We are, we get inquiries about existing, and a lot of existing lots, um, where we get the inquiry, they can't accommodate the increase in the density in terms of cars, in terms of parking. And there's also the factor of many existing garages are less than three feet from the neighboring property line. Some of them have grandfathered windows, others don't. And that becomes an issue when you have a dwelling unit's window up against someone's rear yard, or it can be an issue. And other issues also to do with venting close to the property line, but the, the.
Well, I guess I would, you know, it's, it's an open question. And what I would say is if there was, if there was consideration given to the allowance for accessory dwelling units, either attached or detached, well, I guess in a multifamily, you would necessarily allow attached, correct? So you can have three separate units on the same lot, and they're attached in one building.
Yes.
Right. But what is not being specifically allowed is a, is a 2-unit structure?
No, no, I mean, that's permitted with, we're, I'm saying.
I'm sorry, 2, 2 separate. I'm sorry.
Right, 2, right, 2 separate.
Okay, that's all. It's just a question.
This, if I could jump in here, this is Michael Sullivan for the, for the record. Eric, this, this wasn't something that came out of the master plan reexamination. The discussion regarding accessory dwelling units wasn't something that came out of that. In working in other places with accessory dwelling units, Michelle's brought up a lot of the issues that might arise should you choose to permit that. So I think that it's, I think it's, it's a good question because it really is, I think there's benefits to it in terms of small, affordable housing can be included. In many cases, if you have existing accessory buildings, it doesn't disrupt the urban form or fabric of a block by doing that. But there are a lot of other considerations that need to be made, and that wasn't done in this study because it simply wasn't part of the master plan recommendations.
Right. And, and I guess I come at it from the perspective of when a lot is large enough, there could be ways to do separate structures that respect the setbacks and coverage and dwelling and density, particularly in some neighborhoods where they may already exist and they aren't recognized. And is there a pathway for those people to become legal units? And, and therefore, you know, have a third unit over a garage that already exists, that might be grandfathered in, but may be only taxed as a single family?
Well, it would have to be taxed if it becomes a unit.
Yeah, oh, no, no, correct. But they may only be currently taxed as a single family.
But I think the, I really think the form for that is the zoning board of adjustment, where it could be dealt on a case-by-case basis. Because even though I, I, we deal within our office and code enforcement, we deal with a lot of the negativity of the accessory units. And I would prefer that as a municipality, they're dealt on by case-by-case basis.
Okay, that's a perfectly fine answer.
May I follow up? And it's probably just asking clarification, but this is Alexis. So I'm thinking in particular the typology along kind of the alleyways in Northwest. And my only concern, I think case-by-case makes sense, except that what you're trying to achieve overall in this zoning is a preservation of kind of historic character, but also conformity of uses along a block. And the alleyways, for instance, like, they're quite active with accessory uses. And if you were to start to do a kind of spot zoning where you would take out various ones of those, it actually makes the alleyway less effective as kind of a historic consistently having uses on the back of, of the houses. It, it actually activates the alleyways in a way that they were meant to be accessory units. A lot, for a lot of people, those are their front doors, who rent. So what if slowly you start to lose those? You, you've effectively not only privatized an alleyway, but you've lost the historic character of having, you know, a block that has five or six units that open up to the alleyway?
Well, we, we wouldn't, so if Fangland is going to do a multifamily in the R3, it would probably be new construction. I don't, or I, I have to say, I, I'm actually, I'm not sure. I mean, the alleys were meant to be, not to have dwelling units. They were meant to be the accessway for garages in order not to have the curb cut on the main street.
Are you, really? They were not meant to be dwelling units? Because the typology all through the Northwest is like, that's actually where the affordable units are.
That's, that was not the, how it was supposed to be created. In fact, we only recently, as a city, gave the alleys names because.
Or I would sort of tag on to what Alexis is saying, is that those, those particular alleys in Northwest are also the parking and relief valve for many of the large multifamily houses, 8, 10, 12, 15 units that exist in the single-family zones. And so the, it feels like the, it's maybe the zoning itself, this particular version of the zoning might not be sensitive enough or might not anticipate where this is already a part of the way we live and is, is an aspect of increasing affordability for newcomers and long-term affordability for owners. As people age, they tend to age into smaller units, and they might be able to stay more placebound over time. You know, so I do think that there's a conversation in the R3 zone around the form of how that works. I don't, I don't think it needs to be at all entertained in the R2 or R1 zones. Those are clearly meant to be lower density, single-family houses, et cetera. But I'm, I'm curious if there isn't a little room for some sensitivity in there around new, like both historic forms and new ways of achieving that using contemporary architecture?
Let me pull up the map of where the R3 is.
Right, this is a kind of a moot point because all of Northwest is R1.
Right. I was going to say, I know of R3 is outside of that, but the typology is not foreign to Asbury Park, and it's already valued.
Right. And, and I would, you know, there might even be ways of encouraging, like entrances to those accessory dwelling units should be facing, you know, meant to face the alley, you know, things like that. It's just that we, the zoning sort of forgets how common, it's so common. And it's not just Northwest, it's Northeast as well. And there are a significant, there are so many backyard dwelling units in Southwest as well. Not in the central business district so much.
But, but you're right in that most of the areas with the alleys are the R1. Should I, let me, I should pull up the map. Let me, new share. Give me one sec. Come on, map.
And if I'm the only voice who seems concerned about, you know, or, or seems to want to address the question of detached accessory dwelling units in, in higher-density zones, then.
I think it, this is Alexis. I actually do, and I would like us to fundamentally explore the way in which it goes towards diversity of income and affordability. Because that's really what I think we all care about, and that's what it allows for.
Yeah. And it's a fundamental aspect of our architectural and community history. You know.
This is Mike. I, I agree with you guys. You know, I, I guess I'm a little confused, I guess, a little bit about what, what Michael was saying in that maybe this, that wasn't part of the master plan examination this go-around, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't prevent the possibility that we can add that.
And it's a huge policy decision about those, about the, about doing, permitting units in rear structures. So here is the, if you look at this map where the R3 is, it's sections of the city that predominantly currently have a part in buildings. There's not that much fabric of a typical 1 family with a rear structure.
Is there a special approval or discretionary review process by which, if that typology is extant in a neighborhood, or if there's an alley, somebody in the R1 zone might actually be able to achieve a really pleasing outcome? a really pleasing outcome that's consistent, that doesn't have an impact on the external historic character of the block. You know, there's, it's this kind of itching question of by making everything R one, not everything, by making a large portion of those neighborhoods all R one, it kind of imagines a consistent character that is not fundamentally that consistent.
Well, based on our research with the master plan, it does. A lot of the city is one family dwellings. And what we mostly did, we, you know, we, if you look on the west side, we changed the R one A zoning to the R one because the R one and is a better fit. We changed on the east side, the P O district because a lot of those standards were not, were antiquated. And in, when we were doing the master plan reexamination, we looked at tax records. And we looked and our predominant housing stock is, is a one family. And you see areas of R twos and R threes. And that is where we predominantly see consistent multifamilies, not counting, you know, the waterfront area, you know, CBD Main Street. So some of what, so there was research done for this and I'm, you know, again, if ah, if the planning board would like separate from this process to do an examination of accessory structures and where they should go and what they should look like, I think that should be a separate for study.
That's fair. Um, I, you know, I do think that as we unpack the issues of affordability and housing equity over time, this should be part of that conversation because right now, anybody in a R one, R two and R three zone doesn't really have the opportunity to to contribute to affordable housing through the creation of additional units. We can debate later at some other time which, which zones should be able to do that. But that allowance, I think the, the, the the direct application of R one to, for example, in the neighborhood in Northwest that Alexis and I both live in. My block alone, there are only five houses. There are 17 units in those five houses and they all appear to be single family homes. And they're all legal. These are all legal units. Some have accessory in the back. Some have five units in them. I have two units in my house, two legal units. And you know, so it's this question of the application of that R one zone actually is going to create a fair number or won't create, it will perpetuate non-conformities with no recognition of a kind of gradient that exists as you get closer to Main Street and Memorial. The number of those multifamily properties or more than one family properties increases. And is, is that something we might want to tune to encourage later on?
Right. So, so I think that that sounds like that's a takeaway. That that might be something that we want to do outside of this process. And, you know, because of where we're going with the city itself, I think that that's, that's a very fair thing for us to, you know, with affordable housing and everything, I think that we, we need to go there at some point.
And, and I will also make a, a play here that I agree with you, Michelle. There are the issue of wind, of lot line windows. However, I also know that with small enough units, you need not have windows on every wall. And you can certainly get light and air into very simple studio apartments with no lot line windows. And structures that appear to be as, at least as close as garages, let's say.
Yeah. I think, this is Michael Sullivan. I think that, um, you know, these are some really good points. And I do think that the, looking at this through the lens of accessory dwelling units rather than just simply two family units gives you the leverage to protect these architectural and historic architectural assets that are these accessory buildings that are there. If you just said, okay, two families are permitted in the R one, well, guess what would happen? Both the house and the garage would be torn down. But if you have some sort of a conditions attached to it and it's treated like an accessory dwelling unit, it gives you the leverage for that preservation aspect of it that I think you're, you're looking at. And the spatial character that you get with these unique historic outbuildings is eroding over time as people find them harder to maintain because they don't have somebody to live in them. So I think it's something to look into. I, I think it's worthwhile looking into.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I have more, but not related to the residential zones. If you would like to move on to the business zone, is that okay? Does anybody want to, should we stop and sort of handle residential and then move on to business?
Is it, is it about the bulk standards?
Uh, it is about the bulk standards. Um, if you don't mind actually going back to your map too, that would be.
No, just cause whatever reason, it's not letting me.
It's down at the bottom.
No, but when I click it to like do a new share, it doesn't give me the, my, everything on my screen as an option. I have to stop the share.
I've had that recently. I know.
Click on the, the map, go back to you guys. And then share screen again. And now for whatever reason, again, where's give me one sec. I have to unclick that. That. Okay. All right.
So I've, uh, so I've noted you have moved to consolidate the business zone into a single zone.
Right.
And within that business zone, I think that there's, I, I have a question, which is how are exi- uh, existing residential properties in that business zone handled?
We left the, I believe, because we, we left that you can have. What, your one family?
I'm a two family, but I, I know that there are other existing residential properties. And so are, I assume they are now permitted uses within that district?
One and two family, the one and two family dwellings that are existing at the time of the ordinance are still permitted in the B zone.
Yes.
And how are enlargements and expansions to those one and two families handled?
They are quite generous because you can, standards are the same as any, the B standards are the same for any type of property.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, they, they are not, uh, they are permitted uses. So there will be no variance requirement for an expansion of those uses.
Right. And, and what setbacks and bulk standards do they use? Do you rely on a residential or do you apply the same bulk standards for all uses within the business zone?
I believe it's the same, it's the same standard for everything in the business zone. Am I, Michael, am I, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no differentiation.
Okay. So, um, if a, so multifamily units are permitted in the business zone, is that correct?
A multifamily, um.
Upper, upper story.
Upper story. Yeah. So in other words, if you were to convert, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to convert to a three.
Correct. I, I'm not interested.
Right. I mean, you're, you're, you're housing prototype.
No, um, but I'm curious if a two family wanted to add another dwelling unit, either attached or detached, would that be prohibited? Provided, wanted to expand, provided they met all of the setbacks, parking, everything, you know, if they were able to meet all the standards, would you allow a re- a purely residential property to expand from two families to three families?
It's not listed as a permitted use, so it would have to go to the zoning board.
Okay. Is there, and then my second question is about a significant number of the lots within the business zone, um, especially along Memorial Drive are quite large. And if they are subject to redevelopment, has there been any consideration on setting a, like if the lot is above a certain size, that there are bulk standards that push the bulk away from the single family zone and towards Memorial Drive, for example. And this is back to my point earlier is where the application of the business zone, I think is a good, this is a good application of the business zone, but I don't think it sensitively deals with the potential for large redevelopments to be butted up against what is the sing- what is primarily a single family zone. So you could have a five-story building heading all the way along the block front and then your next house is a single family house. I, I don't think that's the worst thing that could ever happen, but if there were appropriate controls put into the bulk standards of the business zone for large lots, you could request, or you could end up with a result where the mass is distributed less uniformly in favor of a transition between the two zones.
This is Alexis. An example of that would be that along a commercial street or county road, or however you classify that road, you can concentrate density to a higher extent than you could along, let's say, a secondary or a city road.
Correct.
In this case, would allow for density and bulk standards to veer towards Memorial.
Yeah, in that case, or if a lot was over 20,000, 30,000, whatever thousand square feet, that there be considerations given to a more sensitive shaping of the building to interact with, to transition to the, to the residential neighborhoods adjacent.
I think that is an excellent suggestion and excellent idea and something that we should consider.
Thank you.
And it has come up just in applications before this planning board. It will come up again that the residents who are adjoining it want some kind of tapering down to their scale, which makes perfect sense. There should be a transition from the bulk standards along the kind of busiest part down to a lower, it just bulk along the residential edges.
I don't think it has to be significant, like, you know, but you shouldn't, it, it's not the greatest to have a five-story building that only needs to sit 10 feet away from the lot line next to a one or two-story single family house. Like that, that transition might be a little, when the buildings are so close together as we are in this town. So some sort of transition which allows higher density closer to the, to the commercial street of Memorial or Main. It's, in this case, it's almost universally going to be Memorial because the large lot redevelopment is, is mostly in that area. And who knows if those will ever redevelop, but some of them are subject to that.
So what do you think of, I mean, we'll go back and look at, but would you be satisfied with three stories or were you thinking more?
I don't, I'm, I'm actually more interested in where the transition happens and I don't want to say I would be satisfied with this or that, but I think, you know, we would look to you and the board to decide what that appropriate standard is. My other concern is about when those business zones are adjacent to residential uses and if the lot size is large, where the access to those lots is permitted is, you know, important. If you're gonna have, if you have a, a, a development that has ground floor retail plus some number of units upstairs could be in the 10s, 20s or 30s, depending on how much they, they develop. Is the access permitted on the side streets, the numbered streets, or is it meant to be preference to, to, to come in and out of, off of Memorial? I think that, you know, that's another sort of discussion that I would love to hear. I don't think we're going to be able to answer it tonight, but some sort of response or a tuned or sensitive approach to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, meaning, but access to the residential, access to the commercial?
Access to the lots, where their curb cuts are.
Oh, you mean the vehicular access?
Yeah, like where do their curb cuts go? If it's a very large lot and you're going to have 50 apartment units and some retail, which is totally possible on some of these lots. Has there been any thought to how the, where the preference for the curb cuts would be?
Yes.
But Michelle, I mean, and Michael and Donna, are, is this that kind of level of detail that this kind of an ordinance would, would take a look at to say, well, based on this specific situation, you're, we need to be able to have the curb cut here. It sounds very extremely detailed.
I, I actually think I'm suggesting something less detailed than that. It's more like if the lot is over 30,000 square feet and borders on Memorial Drive, right? You would suggest that the curb cut belongs on Memorial Drive and not on the side street, something like that. I don't know.
We, you know, we tend to do the opposite because you know, we, like the B zone, we anticipate the building frontage is going to be Memorial.
That's, and that's fair.
And that you would break up that, you know, that pedestrian, that on Memorial with a curb cut and and I, you know, generally that's not the way we planners think about about things. It's the opposite. That's like the old school way where, you know, you have the curb cut on the main, on the main street because what that, what we, you want is you want to tuck the parking away. And many times having the curb cut on the main drag means the parking is front and center.
Well, the, the zoning does, clearly doesn't allow that, right? This would never permit the parking to end up in the front. It just doesn't seem like that's how it would head. My point being that is there, like if a lot is large enough and it has enough frontage along the side street, is there a control that might say, okay, if you're going to put it adjacent to the residential zone, you need to have a buffer strip of
Yes.
so far.
Yes.
You know, that's one way. So there is a buffering requirement?
Yes. Right, Michael?
Well, there's a, in the parking design standards, there are proposed buffer requirements for parking lots, so.
But buildings can be as far as, as close as 10 feet?
And, and the other, and the other thing is in these supplemental regulations, there's a 10-foot buffer requirement, whether you have parking or not.
I, well, I've lodged my, my, my comment, which is to say, I think especially for I think especially for the large lots in the B-zone, there's it might be a good idea to think about some bulk standards that preface the density and the bulk towards Memorial Drive to transition to the neighborhood.
Okay. Should I change my share screen?
Yeah, it's, yeah, sure. Whatever is comfortable for you.
Or no, I mean, should I go back to the?
Sure. Donna's gone outside.
And it's freezing out here, Eric.
Why did you go outside?
The dog.
Okay. Okay, back to bulk. Or back to this. Did I, any, um, other board members who, who have any more questions about the bulk chart? So for supplementary zone district regulations, we didn't change anything except to reiterate that sexually oriented businesses are prohibited within all zone districts. For law regulations, corner lots, we made the clarification that corner lots have two front yards, one rear yard and one side yard. So no more having to look at the different definitions for each and figure it out by omission. We cleaned up the height for accessory structures and feel it ma, we made it clear that accessory structures in commercial industrial districts, the height of accessory structure shall be limited to the height of the principal structure. Which truthfully is not very tall because they have an FAR of one. And, you know, um, in industrial districts, usually the accessory structure is, is for storage. So, so, and then in residential districts, the height of accessory structure shall not exceed fifteen feet. So of course, if we do a reexamination of turning, you know, accessory structures like garages to have a unit, that's something we could, we can take another look at. But right now, there's, the fifteen feet is pre, is can, pretty consistent with what we have now. The current zoning ordinance lets you, there's a calculation that lets you go a little bit above fifteen feet. But most end up falling at fifteen feet. Okay, now, we go into the zone districts and what's permitted. For the R1, it's still a detached, single-family. Um, we got, we took out the minimum lot size because if you have a pre-existing it, it, it doesn't belong here, if you have a pre-existing lot, you can build a single-family house. That's basically state, state case law.
Right, with the, a, and the, the other reason is that, th- and this was an issue throughout the ordinance was that you're essentially creating a conditional use by saying a detached, single-family home, but it's gotta be in a lot that's X size. You're creating a de facto conditional use, it's very complicated, so we've detached the bulk requirements from the use requirements.
And then for garages, we just struck out for the storage of motor vehicles or non-commercial property. Because that, it, every, the definition, that, that's basically a definition and it belongs in the definition section. Think we, we don't want to overly regulate what people put in their garage. This is the strikeout of the R1A, which is now part of the R1 as recommended by the master plan. And then for the R2, it's now a one and two-family district rather than a one to four-family district. We had gotten very few lots that could be a four-family. And when we did, or I should say, most of them ended up at the zoning board, there, um, they it was very clear that that was a, that that's a, a zoning that many residents would like to see not be there anymore. Most of the fabric in the R2 is, again, um, structures that lend itself more to a one and a two-family. Then we made the same change with garage. And we took out ru- rooming and boarding houses out of the permitted conditional uses. And I will be covering conditional uses in a separate, in the next section. The parking requirements remain the same, we just took out the parking requirement for three to four-family dwelling. And then the, um, the R, the R3, it's the single-family that's permitted, the two-family and the multifamily dwelling. We took out the word low-rise because it's, it's not a very good term to describe the permit, what's permitted there. Permitted accessory uses, again, we struck part of garage. And we, we struck the thing about the parking requirements because we didn't feel that needed to be stated as it's stated. We, so permit conditional uses, we took out the term attached, single-family residential, and we put in townhouse development. When we get to the permit, to the conditional use section, there's a whole section about townhomes. And we added childcare centers because that is something that is no, in the old zoning, was not adequately addressed. And the same with the residential healthcare facility, it was not adequately addressed in the old zoning. The Deal Lake Inclusionary Housing Overlay District, we did not touch since this, it's new. And the board and the council just recently approved it, uh, last year. The affordable housing requirements. And I will stop here and take questions on the use, um, the use standards for residential before I go into the B. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll go on to the B.
I just had, this is Alexis. So what was the thinking behind the, like, making a townhome versus multifamily housing style?
Because the townhome development is not a prevalent housing stock here. And that it we put in pretty strict conditions on what it should look like, and you'll see it as we go into conditional uses, like doors have to face the street.
Right.
Trying not to, because the little bit, and I can't say developments since I've worked, I've had inquiries about townhouse develop, townhouse development that really was just looking to because of certain lot sizes, length, trying just to maximize as many units on a lot as possible while sacrificing aesthetics. So a lot of the conditions in townhomes has to do with the aesthetics.
Okay, thank you.
Does, um, with the townhome typology, uh, does it how is parking in the front yard? Or how is that, or will we cover that later?
Let me jump to it, since there's. It's at the end. Or I went too far, I'm sorry, but it's, because it's alphabetical.
Oh, it's alphabetical?
Well, maybe not, I'm sorry. Wait, let me look at my cheat sheet. No, it's at the top. Okay, here we go. So first standard, it has to be oriented with a front facade. So with a front facade and yard area that faces a public street, individual unit shall have an entry and floor living area that faces the street. Dwellings how, shall have a stoop or a porch. Um, a walkway shall be provided between the front door and to the street. Garages or off-street parking shall be located on an interior court lane or alley behind the building. And fifteen percent of the side area for new projects shall be open green space, not closed in private yard areas. Garages shall be provided along alleys. There must be yard area between the dwelling and the detached garage of at least fifteen feet. Detached garages must be closer than five feet to attract boundary. No front-entry garage or off-street parking permitted behind the building's front facade in the street. Maximum building coverage shall not exceed sixty percent and maximum pervious coverage shall not exceed eighty-five percent.
Wonderful.
I need to do that. Okay, the B district.
Uh, wait a second, it's more. Uh, go to page twelve, I know it's under Deal Lake, which you said we're gonna leave alone. But I have a question on page twelve, Building Design H, uh, six. Those facade shall be furnished in stone veneer, stucco, brick, firebust, cement panel and or cast stone. I, I couldn't build a house with wood siding?
Hmm, you could. But this is for, this is for a, um, multifamily apartment building, so you may not do that. Because it'd be too because you probably are not going to do that because of the cost. To, well, it also
Probably, that means, you say you probably not going to do that because of the cost, why not leave that up to the applicant? I mean, I, I just don't understand why wood siding would be eliminated.
We can add it. Okay.
I had, so I had, thank you.
All right. Okay. The B district really remains the same because we just did a revision of this and with the affordable, um, the affordable housing amendment. Light industrial, we gave light industrial, oh, Eric.
Sorry, may, may I ask a question? It, under, uh, thirty-seven fif, seventy-one point five A, yeah, right there.
Yes.
It says art galleries, art studios, museums and theaters are permitted along Asbury Avenue.
Yes.
Why not Memorial Drive?
They can be permitted, I mean, this was the thought process that we had and it's a recommendation of the master plan that we would try to create an art district along Asbury Avenue.
However, many of the lots on Asbury Avenue are quite small, and it would require assemblage. I think assemblages would be required to make lots of significant size along Asbury Avenue to accommodate those types of uses. Whereas the lots along Memorial Drive are quite large and even might as conversions lend themselves well to those uses. And I, I'm curious how the, maybe everybody else doesn't feel like that should be a permitted use along Memorial?
Well, I, I agree with what, what, uh, what Michelle did say that in that reexamination report, there was a very specific area that has to deal with, um, with Asbury Avenue. Now, whether that, well, whether we want to say only there, that's a whole nother situation, I, I don't believe we need to.
I mean, we, again, we, it was an idea to encourage an art corridor. Anywhere you encourage it, you know, is to not permit it somewhere else. I'm open, but considering I'm not sure where we are going to go with that art corridor, I'm I'm, of course, open to striking along Asbury Avenue and see what comes. I mean, part of it as well, Asbury Avenue is pedestrian-friendly. It was, it was a great idea as an offshoot off of Main that, as, as a pedestrian corridor, Memorial is less so of a pedestrian corridor, but I'm, I'm open to it.
I guess, you know, I think of these things as generators of activity, right? And so art galleries, art studios, those are meant to bring people, not just pedestrians, you know. Although I think pedestrians are great, um, I, I think that that's the kind of use we don't necessarily it might end up being that by saying it has to be on Asbury Avenue, the form of Asbury Avenue isn't necessarily the most conducive for some of the larger format uses associated with those. The floor plates may not be adequate, there might not be access for parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas Memorial Drive, I do think offers that possibility, and I don't think detracts from the potential for it to happen on a smaller scale on Asbury, I think both of those things could be really wonderful. Additionally, I think any active uses that we can put on Memorial Drive that draw pedestrians and require us to start looking at the pedestrian safety on Memorial Drive can't hurt.
Okay.
I tend to, I tend to agree with Eric.
Right.
Even though the master plan does, is very specific about Asbury Avenue, I, I would I, I think, I think that what he says make, makes a lot of sense. What do the other board members think?
We could also incentivize these things on Asbury Avenue, but not incentivize them on Memorial, yet still allow them.
I agree.
It's more, uh, I agree with Eric and so I, I'm gonna go down a little bit further, number fifteen, automobile rental uses located long Memorial Drive only. Anybody who's been in the city for more than ten years knows the only place there was car rental places were on Asbury Avenue, so why is Asbury Avenue being excluded from this?
Do we even want rental uses at all?
Why not? You don't want like, uh, since we're up and coming, you don't want a car rental place, and if that's what the board says? What does the master plan say about it?
Please, the master plan had talked about trying to, i- it's part of the, trying to clean up, uh, the image of Asbury Avenue.
Yeah, it is the gateway.
Yeah.
A lot of uses off of Asbury makes sense.
Th- this is Mike, so if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe there are any automobile rental uses currently along Memorial Drive, so if we're trying to get rid of them on Asbury Avenue, I think we should just take them out completely from the B district.
This, this is also something that was not changed, um.
Yeah.
So so what does, what would the board like?
I just want to bring, this is Alexis, I just want to bring up the consideration that we're probably thinking about kind of the current model of um, automobile, uh, renting, um, and I don't just mean like Zipcar or whatever, but we're it actually reduces automobile use in a town if we have the provision of, let's say, planning for autonomous vehicles or planning for anything like that. So if we're trying to reduce some of the parking strain, um, providing for a model, a shared car model is not the worst.
No, no, it isn't, Alexis, but are we, are we thinking that it should stay away from Asbury Avenue, or?
I don't necessarily think so, I think it, um, I don't necessarily think so. I think it, um, I mean, I, I understand that you're trying to get a consistent kind of storefront or consistent use along Asbury Ave, but Asbury Ave has some of those uses now. It would be modernizing them. I, I don't know. I don't think we should take it out. Because I think it's actually future looking. Um, so that would just be my recommendation, but I, I'm, if other people have strong feelings that it should be taken off Asbury Ave, that's fine.
Um, I have strong feelings it should be taken off Asbury Avenue because that's our gateway and we're trying to upgrade it and give a vision of Asbury Park as being something other than used car lots, um, automobile shops. And, and I think, and I agree with you that it is important that we start using it as looking for alternate means of transportation. But I don't think Asbury Avenue should be that place.
That's a good point.
I think, I think Memorial Drive may be more appropriate for that than Asbury Avenue. That's just my feelings.
But it only allows rental, not repair, correct?
Repair is under conditional.
Ah, okay.
It, it's more, and Yvonne, I appreciate it, but, uh, I respectfully disagree because if we said something could be on Asbury Ave or Memorial Drive, it has to go before the planning board and it, it's gotta be attractive. So we're not gonna let like, you know, some fly-by-night just build like a two-by-four structure and then here's a car rental. I mean, it's gonna have to meet the restrictions. But I mean, and I've seen some car rental places, be it in airports, be it in major cities or major thoroughfares, which are very attractive. And again, I guess if you just wanna make Asbury Avenue, uh, an art center, an art district, you, you're not gonna do it, guys. God bless you.
Excuse me, this is Donna. Um, so I just wanna suggest that um, there might be sort of a splitting the baby option here. You know, the idea of the rental isn't, um, anathema for, for Asbury Avenue. It makes sense for people to be able to walk in and say, I need a car, zipcar, for example. Um, it's the part of the use that's the vehicle storage that's not suited to Asbury Avenue.
Right.
Suited to Memorial Drive. And so that, you know, bulk hoarding of vehicles and just, you know, they're not necessarily in parking spaces. They're all jammed together so that they maximize storage on a lot. Is really kind of better suited to Memorial Drive, um, you know, on the back sides of the, of those fringes um, as storage uses. So, um, you know, there might be a way of saying, we can do automobile rental on Asbury Avenue as long as it's the office. And then they have a runner, they have some sort of, you know, service that goes and fetches the car out of the storage that's over on Memorial, which isn't so far.
I was gonna say, hopefully they go get it from Neptune. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so is everyone like that idea? We would call it, um, automobile rental office? And as the, and then we would split it out, but the, the storage could be, the, the office and the storage could be on Memorial. Does everyone like that idea?
Jim Henry, would you like to, um, specify the number of cars that could be at that office in the ordinance? In other words, uh, an office with no more than three vehicles at that office at any one, uh, any one time? Or some other number?
About the, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. I just have to think that, that out, what the proper wording would be with that. I mean.
Could it be a amount of area of the lot devoted to parking relative to the total size of the lot?
Or a reservation of a certain number of off-street parking spaces?
Yep.
That are customers versus storage.
Right, I like, I like the, uh, the, the concept that Eric put to, mentioned, that it's off-street parking a certain percentage of that lot.
And, and they're gonna have to still comply with, uh, um, uh, impervious coverage standards, correct? Or do, do, do they get?
It's, it's high for the B district.
High for the B district.
But, cause nothing about that kind of use that it's gonna be, you know, asphalt.
Yeah, that, that kind of uses.
High to maximize building footprint.
Right. And because it's parking, you also have a twenty-four foot wide drive aisle. So you're talking a sixty-foot module to deal with two rows of parking.
Yeah, I, I have a feeling it's not gonna be a reality.
Wouldn't you wanna explore what the standards are in the industry and the future? The front, the standards in the industry that they're adopting for present and future use?
They may have them all parked out in the middle of nowhere. Drives to you.
Get that data, then you would wanna take that and structure an ordinance as opposed to going the other way around. Cause you know, no rental type company or future rental company might be able to use it. Depending, uh, based on what we're trying to design without knowing what their needs are and what their future uses are.
That's why I think it's moot in some ways, because what I've seen with the rental car industry, and it's a little rogue. I mean, they'll put a car anywhere and, and, and with the jockeying and, and Donna Miller is right with packing it in. And I'm talking about newer facilities. When I say, again, it's such a nuanced industry because you have big na- big names and you have little names and you have no names. And, um, anywhere from the middle names to the no names, that they don't really care about the standards. They just care about, um, as packing as much as they can because that's their revenue, so.
Right, but, but, but I'd be, I'd be, my, my biggest concern would be to have those cars end up on the street.
Which they will.
And, and that we can't have.
Because I've seen that with every car rental in an, that's not like an airport. They, they put cars on the street.
That's, that's another reason to. Go ahead, John.
But if, if it goes before the planning board and they say they can't do it, how the hell can it happen? Then they would get, zoning would go out and give them a summons every day and put them out of business. I mean, don't we have like, wouldn't they have to come before, wouldn't they have to come before planning with a plan? And say, this is what we're gonna do. And we're saying, no, you can't park cars on the street. No, you cannot have a mishmash of cars all over your property. It's gotta be uniformed as per your plan. And if it's not uniformed, we would say, no, denied.
It's a permitted use, so they wouldn't come to us.
Yeah, they would just get a zoning permit.
And they're not gonna tell you they're gonna park on the street. They're gonna say, well, we'll never do that.
Then it becomes an enforcement issue.
Well, why not make it a conditional use?
Thank you.
Why, they wouldn't change anything. That effect would be if you made a conditional use or permitted use without conditions. And they park on the street, it's all, it's all gonna come down to post approval. It's gonna become post approval problems and enforcement issues.
So, so I'm stupid, so if they are.
No, no, you're not. I think what you're saying is correct.
No, 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 you haven't, you haven't heard my question. So if nobody has to come before a planning board, why is this going into a planning board for resolutions? I mean.
No, they have to come before the planning board for a site plan for a rental car facility, something like that. They need drainage, all that. Um. Yeah.
Jack, they may not be, may not need a site plan. They may, you know, if they go into an existing space, if we make the rental part the permitted use, that's a regular, you know, permitted use. They would just get a zoning permit.
Really? If they have a change of use in the commercial zone like that, you don't need to go for site plan approval?
No, you're not changing the site. As long as you satisfy whatever the parking requirement is, basically. You're not changing the footprint of the building.
What's the likelihood when you put this ordinance into effect that somebody is gonna be able to comply with that ordinance a hundred percent? On Asbury Avenue?
We haven't made the standards. We don't know what the standards are, just like we're talking about.
The likelihood is not likely. And that they would wind up before either a planning or a zoning board. You have to structure it where you want them to go before a zoning or a planning board. So you wanna make sure that you're, whatever you design in terms of criteria, that, you know, you, you, cause you wanna regulate this pretty strictly. You don't want the cars out on the street and all that, I'm sure, so.
I guess to that point, I mean, I feel like if, if one of the re, if one of the repair shops on Asbury Ave closed tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it is possible that, uh, if, if an automobile rental is a permitted use, that that can open tomorrow, like the next day.
Exactly.
Assuming they can meet the criteria, a hundred percent.
Criteria right now, Jack, is that they meet the off-street parking requirement, which is based on.
I'm suggesting that you have additional criteria. I suggest to be.
But like Michelle is saying, we need to study the, the industry to find out.
I said that, correct.
The criteria should be.
Yes, I'm saying, yeah.
Or, or, or do we say that we don't want it on Asbury Avenue? And if they wanna put it on Asbury Avenue, they have to come in front of the board.
That's, maybe that's a better approach.
And prove the particular suitability, show us that it fits the site, that the site is appropriate. And that, yeah, and really hold their feet to the fire about where the car storage is.
Right.
Very.
Not only they have to come in front of us.
So we can, it's full circle.
Okay, okay, then it's more, let me play devil's advocate because I'm hearing a bunch of stuff. So, uh, Keller's Garage, which nobody knows where it's at except me and Jack. Sewell and, no, I'm sorry, Monroe and Memorial.
Right.
Pre-existing, uh, auto repair. So they can just open up a car lot, you're saying, without coming before us, or a rental place without coming before us because it's pre-existing? So why would we let Memorial do it, not Asbury? Then just, like somebody said, then kill it for everybody if you want to.
No, I'm suggesting to recreate criteria from reviewing the industry standards, looking, talking to the planners, coming up with some intelligent requirements for this sort of thing. And you couldn't go into Keller's. A lot of sites wouldn't be, wouldn't be appropriate because they wouldn't be able to comply with the size requirements. Driveway aisles, like Eric said, off-street parking. Um, you know, you've got other things you're gonna have to consider. In the future, you're gonna be seeing EV charging on these places, cause a lot of them are gonna be electric vehicles and they're gonna need to charge. So they're gonna need to have spots to charge. There's a whole lot of things that are, you know, that are, that are going on here. And that, and you should, and I think we're all, I think we're all saying the same thing. We're just coming out a little differently. You should have standards that would make it that, that you can control it so that it fits within what you want either Memorial and/or Asbury Avenue to look like and how it flows and so on. So that they just can't come in and take, uh, Keller's Electric and convert that old place into a car rental place and park out on the street on Memorial.
So how do we do that? We could, how do we do that thing?
You would, you would have to adopt standards.
I'm all, I'm all for that. I don't want a hobo city, so I'm all for that. I want it to look classy. I want it to look nice. I want it to be the gateway. But I just don't wanna throw somebody out with the bad word just because people don't like car rentals. But I mean, so set the standards and let it go on Asbury and Memorial. And hey, I'm only one vote, whatever.
Now, wherever you put it, it's up to you guys. I'm, I'm just suggesting the technical end of it, on, on how to get them to comply and how to get them to come before the appropriate board.
You want more questions since we went on this thing?
No, I'm unsure what to, I'm unsure what we're doing on this one, so. Um.
I think standards is a good way to go. People tell me why it's not a good way to go.
Yeah, I think that's, we leave it for now and look into standards.
Okay. Let me just take note. Okay, John.
On page fourteen then, uh, prohibited uses, number two, licensed healthcare facilities. And I apologize these notes from probably like eight months ago, so I'm trying to read my own handwriting. I have next to, aren't they already there, like, T A R C?
What, what abbreviation did you say?
Oh, Beatrice's Place on Sewell and, uh, Langford.
Well, this language is language that we didn't change. It's in, it's, it's language.
Then how she, then how she operated. And that's, maybe she's out of the zone with your map, I don't know.
What was this, it was Sewell and what?
Sewell and Langford, the, the old, the Hispanic Welfare Center. I mean, that's called CART. C A R C.
The Community Resource Center.
Oh, okay. Because I, I think that, that, that was predated this part of the, this part of the ordinance.
Okay, so the grandfather then?
Yeah.
Okay, and then number five, social clubs. So like the social club, which was right on the border of Asbury and Neptune, the Italian-American Club, they would be prohibited in the future.
Which social club?
The Italian-American Club.
I think that, that's not, that's a church now.
Yeah.
Right, it's been turned into a church, so.
That wasn't the, that was in the R one.
I don't know, it's under this section.
No, 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 in the zoning map, it oddly was the R one.
He's talking about perspective, not past. He's saying that that club would not, so it's the number five, B five, wouldn't be able to be located there. Correct? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um. Does anyone else have any questions on the B? So I'll go to the L I. Where we gave the L I a makeover for the modern world. We say permitted light industrial uses include indoor manu- indoor manufacturing assembly uses that do not emit smoke or fumes or produce noise or vibrations that are detrimental to nearby residences. In addition to general business uses that do not provide retail sales or services. And then we list the permitted uses, which is business and professional offices, sound and video recording studios, art studios, and then various forms of, of uses that are industrial. We added the conditional uses of the motor vehicle service station. Crossed it, got, took out retail used car sales and, um, that's it. I believe Michael and Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, the parking section for this is in another location now, right?
That's correct. We consolidated the parking.
Okay.
So we're just dealing with uses right now?
Well, we did bulk before.
Right, but within, on, I'm sorry, cause I'm, I'm looking back at my notes here, um, and on page sixteen and fifteen in the B zone, they cover site design and building design standards, off-street parking and affordable housing.
Right. Because that we, that we amended, um, about nine months ago.
Right. I, I have two small concerns. One might be a word change.
In the B or the L I?
In the B, I'm sorry, on, on, under H.
Uh huh.
Um, I, a- as we think about green building and, um, the quality of the facades of our buildings, especially in B zones where we're likely to have zero lot line buildings, consistent storefronts. Um, I do think that complementary materials on the sides of buildings could be allowed rather than consistent materials, because I think when you require the same material be used across all facades, you spread the cost out. And so allowing business owners to focus their dollars on the quality of the street-facing facade with complementary materials on the sides might be better than consistent.
What about when those sides are visible?
That happens all the time. Many of our buildings in downtown have brick on the side and beautifully fenestrated facades facing the street. That happens all the time. We see sides of buildings that do not have the same materials. Um, and I don't think that the same material The same material is necessary, but it should be complementary or. Anyway, it's, it's a concern. If everybody else is, just wants me to get on with it, that's fine. I, I am concerned though that. You take the cost and you distribute it on all, on three sides of the building rather than allowing the, 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 the street-facing. Commercial facade to be of the highest quality with complementary materials on the sides.
I mean, I, I mean, I, I think that that sounds within reason. I mean, what do you think, uh? Michelle?
Yes, but, um, Eric, which particular number?
Um, it's H4.
All right, do you want that stroke?
I would just change the word from consistent to complementary or, you know. Similar, like if it's an issue of color, then we should talk about color, but, you know. Requiring them to use the same material on all three sides of the facade. Really may end up cheapening the whole facade.
All right, if that's what you, you, if you see it that way, then yeah, I'm open to it.
It, it also, you know, and I don't know, I don't want to put you two on the spot here, Jen, but, you know, green building materials. Might be. Green building techniques might actually. Want certain facades to have fewer windows and less, you know, expensive materials where you focus the, um. High-performance materials on the street-facing facade to deal with heat loss and heat gain and, you know. Water or whatever it happens to be.
Eric, Jim Henry, uh, one thing we have to be. Concerned with here is that we don't make the, uh, requirements subjective.
I, I agree with you. That's why I, I, I'm not sure that the right complementary is the right word. Is it, is it an issue of color? Is it an issue of material? How did, you know, and I don't want to open a whole can of worms, but we could also. Come back to it later.
I understand what you're saying, and it certainly is a, uh, worthy of, uh, serious consideration. But, uh, we have to be very careful with what we put in there so that it's something that's enforceable.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, Michael, do you think that, that a complimentary is the right word for that kind of a situation or?
I, I think that, um, I think that, you know, we didn't have any real hand in this, in this ordinance, but I do think that, um. It could have been more explicit. I think Eric's exactly right. The historic, uh, building constructions had varied, varied, uh, facades. Um, and I think that if you're going to. Modify the language here to, and I think the, the language should echo if everybody would agree to that. Exactly the preference that Eric is talking about, and that is that the line share of, uh. Cost and finishes should be, um, focused on the primary facade along the street. And that, uh, other materials complementary to those, it, it, whether they are unified or complementary, they don't have to be identical. I think that's really the point. Um, and that, and that the, the point about, um, the energy, uh. Efficacy, uh, and performance of materials. Will also reflect not just its relationship to the street, but also its relationship to exposures, solar exposure. Winds and things like that. So there should be some space in this language, I think, to. Provide for a preference for how these buildings should be treated, but also an allowance for that flexibility. Uh, around the other sides.
And if, if I may also add, this is only in the business zones where, where it is typical to see. The street-facing facade and consistent street walls. So you, you don't detect. Blank facades quite as readily as you might in fully detached areas.
Right. But the exception would be for buildings that are on corners.
They have two street-facing facades.
Okay.
As long as the facade faces a street, that's where, you know, and corner lots do have that special burden in that they have two street-facing facades.
Okay, then I would have no objection.
I, I don't, I don't either. I, I think it makes sense.
Right.
Um, and then one other question I have in this area is about site design, number G2. Uh, is this an either or? So it says a planted buffer strip of not less than 10 feet in width. Or a solid fence provided, shall be provided along each side or rear property line. So if they provide a solid fence. They, they don't need to provide any planted area on the other side.
Where are you, Eric?
G2, I'm sorry, page 15.
I think, I think it's at the top of your screen right there.
Yeah, it's on the same page as B2.
Yeah, right there.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So I'm, repeat what you said, though.
So, so you're, so site design is requiring a 10-foot planted buffer adjacent. To, um, along each side and rear property line that abuts a residence.
Right.
So if they provide a fence. Does that remove the requirement for a 10-foot buffer or, or a 10, a buffer at all, or a 10-foot planted buffer only?
Hello. It does, um, it, it's an either or.
Hmm. See, I feel like there should, if you're budding a residence, you should have 10 feet of unplanned, of unpaved area. Before the building, before, uh, I guess you could use it for site access though, right? I get it. It, it's. Well, if a fence were provided, could you ask for like a three-foot buffer? Because nothing can be built within three feet of the property line. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's thinking about, it's exactly what you said, like, uh. Act, you know, it could be a driveway access, but if you want, we'll put. A planted buffer strip of not less than 10 feet width or a solid fence with a, with a planted buffer strip of three feet. Would you, would that be good?
Yeah, I think that something that provides a break from the fence line to where the paving starts. Is both a stormwater management issue and a good neighbor issue.
Okay.
And, and I don't think the, three feet doesn't sound overly restrictive to me.
No, and it's the minimum.
Right, it's the minimum that anything can.
Living, yeah.
Exactly.
Any more in the B?
I'm sorry to have to go back like that. I thought we.
No, it's okay.
Thank, thank you so much for your patience with me.
No, not at all. So we're. So I'm gonna then ask, does anyone have a question about the uses in the L I?
Uh, this is Mike, sorry to bring it up, but, um. What was the thinking again behind motor vehicle service stations as a conditional?
Giving it some stricter standards.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, is it something that we want to allow at all?
True, there are none in the L I currently.
Yeah. I don't know, just a thought. I, I feel like gas stations are probably on their way out as a use.
I mean, I don't think they're on their way out, but the site selection for them is different than they were in the past. But does it, we can strike it if everyone would like it struck.
A service station is not a repair station?
Correct.
Okay, so the distinction is made in the definitions?
It's in the conditional use section. Um, one has pumps and one doesn't.
So a service station is, is, has pumps?
Correct.
Repair, it's not, got it.
We don't, we don't, we don't have any today. I don't know if anybody feels strongly about that?
I don't, well. I will always err on the side of less auto-oriented uses.
I, I happen to agree with you on that in this situation. Anybody else on the board that?
So, so why don't strike one, two, and three?
I agree with you.
Well, contractor yard, you want stroke? Uh, I think.
I don't know the definition.
Are adjacent to residential neighborhoods.
I'm sorry, what, Eric?
I, I didn't mean to cut you off, John, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have the definition in front of me, but I mean, it just like, like, looks like blah to me. So I mean. If we're striking one, I think we strike two, and then I have no problem striking three.
But isn't three, like a contractor's yard would be like Hog and his yard where he keeps his tools and things?
He's a legally non-conforming use then. It doesn't prevent him from being there. It just doesn't allow new contractor yards.
I don't know, I, 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 I kind of like the one and two to be removed and contractor yard. Because I think that we, we don't want to encourage that kind of, uh, those kind of businesses to come to us. Like a hog, like a. You know, like in all seasons, like, uh.
Good point.
Yeah.
This is Michael, uh, to pick, picking up on that, Barbara. Just a reminder, zoning is a, is a, you know, an aspirational perspective, you know, prospective of you. If you allow, just to talk about it, if you really don't want these types of uses and you're really just including them because you have some existings that are. For pre-existing uses, but you have no intention of allowing new ones in, then you should remove all three of these. Um, if making them conditional uses. Is a lower bar to pass from a variance perspective than if they were not permitted and somebody came in and wanted to do one. So. Um, if you really don't want these uses, then they shouldn't be allowed even as conditional uses.
Do you think, John?
I think Michael's correct. You know, in, today, I mean, I have another business that. Has that sort of thing and. With the value of property in Asbury and where Asbury's going and has gone in the last 25 years or so. You're not going to see very many general contractors that are going to want to park their trucks at night back there and you'd. When you look in, they're always a tall, if you want to screen them, it's always a very, it's usually a 10, a 12 to 14-foot fence. With slats in it and cyclones, so you can't see it. When you open up those gates, you see all kinds of stuff in there. You know, uh, construction materials, piles, um. You know, if that, you know, if, if your intention is to move the city in a different direction from the good old days along Memorial. Uh, or as I used to know, Railroad Avenue, um. You know, make it a non-permitted use and only be allowed in as a use variance with very, very strict conditions, if at all.
Or a continuation of illegally non-conforming.
Yeah, non-conforming, you can't regulate anyway. They're, they're, they're in there, whatever they have, if they're there illegally, the only thing you can do is. Enforce code, uh, on them for, you know, noise, trash. Whatever, if they should have a fence and they don't have the fence, that kind of stuff.
And existing contractor yards could sell themselves to another business and continue as a contractor yard, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't stop the transfer of existing yards and.
Does not.
Yeah.
But that sounds like that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, today you're not going to get contractors. Hog, Hog was there for God knows how many years. I mean, he, I don't know how long ago they were there. Or you go up to North Long Branch, you see Jack Kelly. He's got facilities all over the place because he does all the New Jersey natural gas. You're not, you're not going to see it in, in, in an urban area such as Asbury where the. Everything's changing and the values are changing, you're going to.
Property values are too high.
They're going out to Farmingdale, you know, and out Western Neptune, out into Tintin Falls in the woods somewhere. Where they can get some space and not be around people and value, you know, it's much cheaper.
And, and perhaps we should remove all three.
Let's just remove all three.
I support that.
And just, and just as clarification, Hoag, Hog, whatever, I call him Hoag. They're not in light industrial, they're in the business district and. The way I look at the map, light and district, industrial is like from Second Avenue to. Cast First and halfway. Towards Asbury and just between Memorial and I'm going to say Tomstock. So I mean, right now, I don't think any of these are in that location. If, if we're just talking about light, light industrial.
It's the car wash and the laundry and the.
Building that I'm not sure what's there now that used to have Mama's Kitchen.
Yeah.
Is it a car wash, a motor vehicle engine body repair garage, or a service station?
It's already there, so it can continue.
I agree, but I don't think they, okay, I don't think they fall under one, two, three. I agree with everybody. Let's just strike them.
All right, let's strike them and move on. P1 and P2, parks and schools, change from municipal property. In the map, map now correctly reflects schools, schools. Were not correctly reflected in the past. And parks are correctly reflected as P1s. Bed and breakfast establishments, the conditional, the conditional uses listed here. Were moved to the conditional use section. Which we'll review when I get to that part. We struck dwelling unit sizes because they're really not legal to have in your ordinance in New Jersey.
That's a shame.
Aren't they addressed in the Uniform Construction Code?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So it's not like they're unregulated, it's just not in zoning section.
Right, so is that Erica said what a shame?
Yeah.
Okay, Eric, just to give you a little briefing, this is a, it specifying minimum.
I want to put maximums on them.
Oh, well, that, well, you can, well, that, that's different.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's different, right? You know, the minimums are exclusionary, right?
I want to put maximums on them.
Maxims are, you know, if you have a, if you have a real, if you can document, you know, that you, your maximums will be consistent with the, uh, existing district character. Then that's something that can be done and oftentimes in, uh, when we've worked in other historic communities. Um, regulating bulk below that which the building envelope would permit to ensure consistency with the bulk and the massing of other homes is something you can do.
Yeah. It seems like a can of worms for the moment. We'll just move on.
We didn't, for trailers, we changed, um.
Hey, Miss, Michelle, I'm sorry, it's more, can I go back to something?
Sure.
And on page 17, where it was, uh, parks, schools.
Yes.
If you struck, if you struck municipal properties, what are they? What, what is the, what's City Hall? What's the Fire Department? What's the parks? What are they? If they're not listed anyplace in this thing?
Well, City Hall has, is in the main, both City Hall and the, and the Fire Department are in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan.
Hold on. Okay, so that was only under light industrial?
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm sorry, that, that's only under a light industrial, you're striking municipal properties?
No, 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 the P, the P districts, but it was more of a cleanup item. In that the P, the, the P districts previously were not, um. Correctly labeled, like the. Because the only thing in the zoning map, it covered some parks, but not all, some schools, but not all. And this just makes it clearer to have two different colors, one's for parks. One's for schools and with the language that says one is for parks and one is for schools. Because already City Hall and the Fire Department were put in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay, got it, I'm sorry.
So, uh, real quick, Michelle, sorry, uh, 30 dash 73 dot two arcades.
Uh huh.
Do we need to say coin operated?
No, we just didn't touch this section.
Okay, never mind, yeah, you're right.
Well, I was gonna skip that, but I mean, this one has always baffled me. I, I can never wrap my hands around it. And it, it just, let me read one of them. Let's just go to arcades B. I mean, I know places right now that do this. I, I know places like that, under the definition of arcades, do it. And like, I have no problem with like, be the, I'm trying to think of somebody. I don't want to throw them under a bus, but I'm sure there's a lot of establishments in the city of Asbury Park that have more than four game rooms or like, you know, and I have no problem with that. So I mean, I, I don't understand Barbara trying to be so, I'm gonna use the term wrongfully, so draconian, like, you know, if I have a big bar, I can only have like three pinball machines or one pool table and two pinball machines or two ski ball machines and a pool table, I mean, it's just like, it's, it's, it's just always baffled me. I don't understand, like, you know.
One, one way dealing with that, John, might be restricting the total amount of floor area devoted to a particular use if you're a bar or a whatever else.
I'd, I'd rather go that route than a number, because, right, you could have very big bar or restaurant, there's a couple of machines and, but yeah, I, I like that, Eric, I like that better than just saying, hey, guess what, you can only have three of these, when right now, all of us in the city, you know, all of us on the phone call right now, we can name five places that are violating this and nobody's ever given them a summons, so why put something in that we're not going to enforce and we haven't enforced?
Someone gave them summonses in the past. But.
When, when?
Something like three, four years ago.
Okay, and they're still operating, so.
Yeah, but let's, so I, I can be truthful. We did, the zoning and master plan subcommittee, we did have a brief discussion about arcades. I do not remember why we concluded to leave it be, I do not remember at all. I don't know if Barbara or Michael or Donna remembers.
I know that we, we didn't want, I know that we didn't want to have too many of these machines operating on, you know, in the bars and whatnot, so that they wouldn't really turn into arcades instead of, um, I mean, that they turned into solely as arcades.
But, this is Donna. And I remember the discussion during our committee meeting and I remember back from the 1980s, the purpose of this restriction was, again, we didn't want to have sort of the honky tonk effect of what's going down on the waterfront, on the boardwalk, in the business district, uh, in, on Cookman and these other parts of the city. So we were trying to restrict those types of amusements from other parts of the city. That's, that's where this came about. If you were going to be in arcade, you needed to be down on, on the boardwalk. So now it's more of a, you know, it's okay to have coin operated machines, I mean, I don't know anything about these things, I call them pinball machines, right? That's what, um, you know, if you have them in a pizza place, if, if Four Jays has a couple of, you know, um, machines for people to play games while they're waiting, who cares? It's just a relic and how we want to treat it. Do we want, you know, we want to keep this? The purpose you're going into that business is for, you know, to pick up a sub, get a pizza, whatever the main use is, not the hanging out and playing of games, so.
My, my only thought with this, and I, you know, I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way, but, you know, I think a people, a lot of people are familiar with a Yestercades or a, or a Barcade situation, and I think those would be neat in our downtown, but I, I could be wrong. I mean, I'm open to whatever.
No, I, I have to say that, that, the problem with the term arcade or, or this is, it's covering two different things, and I agree with you, Barcades, Yestercades, yeah, that's, that's cool. And that's one model, but I have to say for the five and a half years that I've worked here, no one has come asking to do that. But what it does help regulate is when it is also in a bar, and that's where, um. And part of the regulation with that is that it helps control more of a drunken atmosphere in a bar with, and again, not like a bar, of course, bars have pool tables, they have two boxes, but when you have a, a lot and P, and its main goal is to keep people there drinking, getting drunk, playing drinking games, that's like what it nowadays has meant more to regulate.
Right.
But I'm very, I'm, I'm open to ever y'all, y'all want.
So, let me just ask you real quick, if, if, uh, if Yestercades wanted to open tomorrow on Cookman Ave, could they go for a, well, no, that's a bad example, that's, that's a plan amendment. They would have to get a plan amendment.
Right, but that's mostly, yeah, the, but this is, um, this arcades also covers accessory uses too. It's covering primary and it's covering accessory.
All right, then I'm, I'm okay leaving it then.
Or it, do you want to go with Eric's suggestion that we just converted to a, a, a square footage?
I would agree with that, just because I also think that someone could, what is coin operated?
Yeah. That's the thing.
Like, it doesn't really apply anymore, all arcades, if you do it.
F card.
Swipe cards.
It's really just for, it's just for amusements.
Right, I think it should just be amusements and do it as a square footage. This is lax, by the way.
Yeah.
I'm cool with that.
And I agree.
Okay.
Just one other quick question. The last words there, as approved by the zoning officer, does that mean that, uh, the zoning officer has a say as to whether or not an established establishment can have one, two, or three machines?
No, we should strike that, that's just a redundancy. Cause it's all subject to the zoning officer. Okay. Or unless, or I'll, I'll keep going, if anyone wants me to go back, we'll go back.
The only thing I would suggest, Michelle, if you're gonna take coin operated out of the first phrase, first clause, you've got two or three cu- uh, paragraphs after that that refer to coin operated.
Yeah, we'll just strike.
Might want to make it consistent throughout, it could be, you know, uh, for purchase or for rent, whatever, whatever the term is.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll eliminate all the coin operations. Okay, where was I? I was.
You were getting to rooming, bed and breakfast?
No, that comes in, that's in conditional uses where it should be now. Trailers. We removed the, the part that says the city council can grant permission for temporary use of a trailer for living or working quarters because that, that defies zoning.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Back to that, this, this is the subject of a lot of abuse, okay? Corner of Main and Asbury Avenue, when you had the gas station there that we fought with at the zoning board for a couple of years. A lot of them would get old boxes from tractor trailers or 26 foot box trucks, put them up on pedestals and just put the tires in there, and the next thing you know, you got old truck boxes being used on, on these sites and they, they can get very sightly. And also where people start parking trailers in their driveways.
Right.
You gotta be careful, so you should really look this over, make sure it's what you want. What does B mean? Trailer, which is accessory used to a manufacturing or warehouse use in the LI zone?
That, that means basically this, you know, if, if part of their operation is is filling a trailer, but the trailer doesn't go out that night with the cab, that the trailer can stay on the lot. Like the laundry.
Okay. Okay.
Or the super supermarket. Although they're not in the industrial zone.
No, this is just a general for trailers, this is all zones.
Okay.
We struck commute, commercial uses in the waterfront area if redevelopment zones because the, that has its own redevelopment plan, doesn't even refer back to this ordinance. Minor home occupations got a modernization tweak. We struck entirely within the dwelling. And B, but the primary use of the premises. And foreseeing no more than 20% of the gross floor area of the dwelling or accessory structure, rather than saying the, the room. And this does permit someone's accessory structure to be used as part of the minor home occupation, which mostly means, can mean you can store your real estate signs or, or et cetera into your accessory structure. Or that you can, I, um, basically you can use your accessory structure as part of your home occupation.
Can you use your accessory structure as your primary office?
Hmm, no, my, not, minor home occupation is basically where you don't, uh, you don't have, um, clients.
I understand. Aren't, aren't a lot of us doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, post 2020.
But, a difference though is you, for example, Eric, you don't need a business license.
No, no, I do not.
Right.
Okay, no, I'm, and I'm, I'm working from home. Right, which is different, I'm just curious about how minor, do, do we need to take a minute to look at minor home occupations in the context of our, our new normal? And it's a question like, if somebody has a garage that has electricity but not running water.
Right.
Can they convert that to a functional conditioned office space with no running water?
So I'm gonna say, yes, we have let people pull electricity into their garages. And then, you know, if you want to work in there, you can work in there. But, um, I have not had yet anyone apply for their accessory structure to be their minor home occupation. Almost everyone who applies for a mine, minor home occupation, they want to do it in their main house.
Is there a downside to allowing it in an accessory structure?
Uh, again, more so about what exactly is going on with that minor home occupation with an accessory structure backing up against someone else's property. But saying that, the minor, anything, if we get an application from anyone where it's something that is more of a nuisance use, like welding or, um, this, the zoning board, I don't know if you were on the zoning board, Eric, when the sound studio?
Oh, yes.
Yes, then we, we, we don't classify that as the minor home occupation.
That was just an accessory use.
Well, no, the sound studio, we, we said the use wasn't permitted.
Well, yeah, it sounds like you've covered it then, and you would allow somebody to have their garage converted to a home office or a minor home occupation, an architect, a.
Yeah, and again.
Creator or whatever.
Like I said, I really haven't seen this as an issue because most people find it probably easier and cheaper to do it in their house rather than upgrading their garage to accommodate, and even to the point where, you know, where they want to be there all day. So, we really haven't seen that.
I'm sure the incessant Zoom calls would be much more welcomed in my garage.
But also your wifi now has to hit your garage.
That's true.
And Michelle, there was a tiny thing, there was that extra E on DEP, is that gone now?
Oh, H.
Um, letter G, which I think it's right below where you are on the screen.
Um, you're right, I think we have a typo, thank you.
Literally just an E.
I just want to mark it in my paper copy. Okay. We did strike deliveries from commercial suppliers shall not be made more than once per week because that's antiquated. Okay, we kept upper story residences in non-residential zoning districts. We didn't, we didn't change this. Open space, we added that multifamily residences in any zone shall provide open space for residents that constitutes at least 30% of the lot area. But we were flexible in that it can be common interior recreation areas, balconies, roof decks or terraces, so there's some flexibility there. Accessory uses and structures, this is where I had mentioned before, um, that, that you could potentially have more than 15 feet in height for your accessory structure if it was farther away from the, the rear and the side lot lines, we, we struck that calculation. We exempted uncovered decks and pools. And that we now permitted someone to have a shed and it not count towards their building coverage. And when I say shed, like the kind of thing you would buy from Sears or, or Home Depot. That you would use just to store your, your lawnmower. Before I start to jump into conditional uses, does anyone have any questions? All right, let's jump into, into conditional uses. One of the most important, well, most important, microbrewery or craft distillery. This is an addition because the zoning ordinance was moot on this use because this is a more modern use of our times. So this one is a completely new, new addition. And this mostly, the conditions mostly talk to the industrial aspect of a microbrewery of a craft distillery. Oh, does someone have a question?
Mike, just to clarify, if it's in a redevelopment plan, these standards wouldn't apply, right?
Right.
Unless it was amended to such. Yeah, okay.
Right. Residential healthcare facility, we gave this revision and we struck number one, which is really I shouldn't say not legal, but really not something that should be in the zoning ordinance. And the same with what we struck in the old number three. So this got a cleanup residential healthcare facility. We also struck that number eight because it was too subjective and prone to lawsuit. And we struck number nine because we didn't think the distance requirement for this made sense. But um we really don't see that many residential healthcare facilities that needs a distance requirement. So also what got struck was um adult bookstores and adult entertainment because now we're just prohibiting that. So it looks so contractor yard is now going to be struck because we struck it as a use. So we'll make note that we're going to strike contractor yard. We struck philanthropic uses as conditional uses because they um because they feel they really don't need to be regulated as a conditional use.
Yeah, the just this is Michael Sullivan. These are this is really regulating these types of uses, which are like assembly uses based on content, whether they're profit or nonprofit. So it's it's not appropriate to deal with that in the zoning ordinance in that way.
Right. Townhouse developments, we we already went over. Urgent care is new because urgent care is a use that, again, more modern that we've seen within the last 10 years. And this gives some standards for them because it's including the operating hours because some of them can be a 24 hour use. So I guess we're going to strike motor vehicle service station because we struck it as a use. And the motor vehicle repair garage because we've struck it as a use. Child daycare centers again got got a facelift, got a modernization um for today with subjective language removed. Um the buffer requirement was removed here because other areas that require buffer require other parts of the ordinance require buffer requirements. So it was duplicate duplicative. And again, the subjectivity was struck that the planning board would make certain determinations because you can't you can't have that in a modern day con conditional use ordinance. And we
Michelle?
Yes.
Excuse me. Uh, can we go back to page 30, item? I three, uh, does it make sense?
With the but we're gonna strike all that.
Okay, my copy is not struck.
Oh, no, because we just made the determination tonight that we're striking the um service stations as a
Thank you.
Major home occupation. This is different than the minor. This is where this is why it's under conditional use. This is when someone really wants to um someone with a business wants to open it up in their house and they're going to see and they're going to see clients. Where there's going to be more, it's going to it's going to have more of a characteristic of what you would find in a business or commercial district than a residential district. Thus, we put it as a conditional use.
Hey, Michelle, it's John. Can I apologize? Can you go back to page 29 for a second?
Sure.
Number nine, maximum building coverage shall not exceed 60%. Number 10, maximum impervious coverage shall not exceed 85%. You're right, we covered it before, but I forgot. What was it before?
We treated townhouses differently. Um they weren't put in as a conditional use. They actually really were not covered well. It it was listed as a attached single family. And I I need Donna and Michael help me out here because I um not even sure we had specific regulations for them.
This is Donna. Yeah, the previous um bulk standards were just um you know, similar to the to the current um regulations, there were no building, there was no impervious coverage requirement.
I do. I believe there was like a mismatch where the the bulk standards were the same as for a detached and wasn't wasn't custom fitted for a townhouse.
No problem. So where it says not to exceed 60, not to exceed 85, previously there was no numbers.
Well, it it would the building coverage would have fallen by de facto to the detached R1, which would have been 25% and instantly would trigger variance. And the before the zoning ordinance had no maximum impervious coverage for any use whatsoever. So all the maximum impervious coverages now in the ordinance are all new for every use.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I, no, I was gonna say next is churches and houses of worship. And this isn't existing, was an existing category. We remove language that just doesn't legally pass muster today. Including that the the planning board may issue a conditional use permit um following these standards because some of the standards were too subjective. Um, so we kept the standards that made sense. And we added for funeral homes, the provision that they can store the the cars and the other vehicles that are part of a funeral home. And again, buffers was struck here because it was too subjective and buffers are taken care of in another section. We um struck out the ordinance planned area development in the waterfront redevelopment area because it was no no longer served a purpose because the waterfront redevelopment plan does not refer back to the zoning ordinance. And that should be it on commercial uses. We we got rid of heli stops because we do not want heli stops. And we struck the artist loft apartments because now it's a permitted use rather than a conditional. Does anyone have any questions about the conditional uses? Barbara?
No, we can keep going.
Can we have a bathroom break?
Absolutely. So so we're finished with the 39 pages?
Yes.
Okay, so let's let's take uh let's take a five minute break. Can I get a motion?
Alexis Taylor, so moved.
Okay, five minutes.
Thank you.
You need a second?
Second.
Second, Mike Manzella.
All in favor? Okay, none opposed. Want to call a meeting back to order?
Ah, yes, please.
Okay, call call the meeting back to order. I'll take the roll. Don Moore.
Here.
Von Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Uh, Barbara Krazak.
Yeah.
Eric Galipo.
Here.
Okay, all present in the county.
All right, um, since we have we have about four different sections that we have in total, I believe, here. Or is it? Yeah, I think it's we have three more sections to go through. Perhaps at this point um, we may want to get input um from the public, from public questions at this point for this
Yeah, I think
section, so we can
Fair. This is Alexis Taylor. I do notice that a couple of hands are raised and I think um, it might be a good moment to allow during this pause.
Yeah. It's just like what I'm thinking so that we just make sure that there's there's anyone else from the planning board have any other questions that they did not get a chance to ask on on the zoning amendments. I know you weren't shy. All a good thing. Okay, um, is there anyone from the public, if anyone from the public would like to ask any questions, please raise your hand um, so that we can uh call on you. Uh can I please have um I'm sorry, I I I'm not sure what your last name is, but let's say Paul. We could unmute Paul, please?
This is Paul McEvelie. Is it my opportunity to comment?
It is my opportunity to question anything that was said today. So it's a question uh on the specific topics that were discussed today.
Question would be for the witness, correct?
Yeah, so the question would be to Michelle.
Okay.
My apologies. I have a comment offer. I guess that would be later in the program.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next person that we see with a hand up, we uh with the um numbers ending ending three, five, zero. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
I think so, or it's been only 400 Deal Lake Drive, apartment 5B, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Uh, my question for, I guess, the city planner, uh Michelle Alonso, uh, is uh, when you're talking about offices in homes, uh, are you aware, I mean, you've been here. Are you aware of serious violations that resulted in people dying with illegal uses on properties like running automobile service repair shops and residential garages on Fourth where the man was burned to death? Uh, city officials running their own private businesses out of their home on Fifth Avenue with employees mercantile uh, membership uh, and not having any kind of variance or occasional use permit. And then when they get it, they would misrepresent and say, oh, no, we don't have any employees, etc., etc. So you're aware, aren't you?
Mute, please. Who's ever in charge? Mr. Mignoli. You're gonna ask questions of the witnesses for her testimony? Not about zoning enforcement. That's not what we're here for. So please rephrase your question or questions and direct it to the witness based on the testimony that she gave. Please unmute Mr. Mignoli.
Okay, so Ms. Alonso, with the uh, a lot of these applications in the city for use in homes, uh, until Ms. Van Wagner left, uh, of course weren't aren't weren't you the one who receives those applications, let's say, for occasional use?
Please mute Mr. Mignoli again. Mr. Mignoli, I'm gonna instruct you one more time. This will be the last warning. Ask your questions regarding the testimony that the witness gave and the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. Unmute him, please. Go ahead. If you have any questions regarding
Yeah, I do have a question. I'd like to know, Ms. Alonso, why you let Mr. Serpico speak for you?
Okay, mute him.
He just can't be quiet.
He's out of order and mute him. Move on to the next person, please.
Okay, from what I can see that there are no other hands raised.
Okay.
Wait a second, wait a second. Uh, someone just popped up. Um, the city historian, please? Please unmute the city historian.
Hello, folks. How are you?
Hello.
Fifth Avenue. Okay, um, can we go back to where the testimony started to the um chart of bulk standards and setbacks and things like that?
Yes.
Great. I'm gonna scroll on my copy, too. Let's see, what page was that? Give me a page.
Three.
Three, okay, all the way at the beginning. All right. I'll have to scroll up there. Okay, got it. Page. Nope, it's not page three. Three? Well, look at that.
Are you in, do you, are you looking at?
Was it the right spot? Oh, okay, here we are. Wrong document. Definitions. Right, page three. No, still not the right document. Or did you combine documents with different page numbers?
No, what I'm looking at is what should be on the website. Is that where you got your document?
I saw this before, but my page three, uh, this is the the memo. It must be down further. Hold on a second. So I know I
No, I'm looking at the actual I'm looking at the draft with the strikeouts.
Exactly, yeah.
And but they're different sections. This is the one that's titled after draft zoning amendments for Asbury Park.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so there is a, there are two page threes. Okay.
Yeah, I'm a few, Werner. I have the same situation. Okay.
Yeah, three, and then there's another section with another page three, apparently.
Right, they're different sections.
Okay. That's what I was getting at, that you've combined various documents with multiple similarly numbered pages. Okay, I'm here. Okay, so um just a housekeeping thing, on the thing that you're showing on the screen here, it shows the front yard setback for R1, R2 as strikeouts. On the document I have, it shows it as underlined, which is correct.
The strikeout.
The strikeout. Interesting. Why is it struck out?
Because it's a footnote.
It would seem to me that underlining it and having the footnote makes more sense. Because that's the historical evolution of Asbury Park is 25 foot setbacks with a footnote that it can be different. Why would you strike out?
I don't know what you're asking.
I think he's, if I may.
Yeah.
And Werner, if I'm incorrect, stop me.
Yeah.
I think he's saying that he believes the 25 foot should remain. And in the alternative, that that footnote for the prevailing should stay there as well. Both should be there.
Exactly. And that's what it shows on my document, which I downloaded from the web.
Okay, then it
It's underlined with the footnote, so it remains at 25 feet with the footnote that it may be different depending on the circumstances.
Fine.
That would to make more sense, wouldn't it?
This is Donna. This is Donna. Um Michelle.
Yes.
The version you have on your share screen right now.
Uh huh.
Is showing it as a strikeout. That was a change that we made because it was erroneous. It is supposed to be 25 feet with the footnote for the prevailing setbacks.
Okay.
There was, there was a thing with the download, uh, because there was a conversion There was, there was a thing with the download, uh, because there was a conversion with PDFs back, I don't even remember how far back this goes. Um, but yes, the, the front yard setback and the R1 and the R2 is supposed to be 25 feet with the footnote that says the prevail, the minimum shall be the prevailing setback of principal structures along the same block front facing the same street, and then refer to the definitions.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you very much, folks.
Further in the chart, some, if you see it, looks a little, some of the underlining looks wonky in this chart. I, I'm looking at my copy on my computer.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Michelle's screen, I'm like, wait a minute, no, this is, yeah. Some of those PDF conversions screwed up the lines, sorry.
I'm glad you're taking that seriously. I thought that it was a conversion error, uh, that's what I thought it was. Because the, uh, the line above 30 feet doesn't make any sense either.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, so it's 25, 25, 30 with the footnote that it may be the prevailing if it should be, uh, different. And that's what it always was historically, so we're on the same page here. Okay, great. Um, and then there was a discussion about, um, where the setbacks are measured from. I think we're all in agreement now, finally, after all these years, that setbacks are all measured to the front face, the primary front face of the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I heard some testimony that, um, there are, um, encroachments that are allowed up to two feet of various things, such as, uh, chimneys, uh, bay windows, uh, protuberances, as they're called, and that still exists, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Um, now, to the definition where the footnote one says refer to 3015, I looked in 3015 and there's nothing there for defining what prevailing is. Am I missing something here in your definitions?
Yeah, it's not defining prevailing, uh, it's defining the front porch and the front yard setback. We don't, we didn't make a definition for prevailing.
That's not what the footnote refers to. The footnote is referring to prevailing setbacks, not porches. So I think, I think we need to clarify what prevailing is. That's my, uh, my thought on this. Um, it's been bandered around in various applications as the average, which it isn't. Um, but is there a definition of, uh, of this somewhere in the new definitions? 3015?
No, we did not create a definition of prevailing.
All right, so what is this referring to, then? If there is no 3015?
The definition section to look up things like setback, front yard, porch, principal structure.
I understand that. I'm asking, where is 3015?
I think he's saying, how do you define prevail?
No, what's 3015, say?
Entire definition section.
That's next.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that next.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're, you're calling it the entire heading. You're saying refer to the entire section of definitions to find out how to interpret this?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I would suggest that that be fine-tuned a bit. That's, that's a tall order, to look through all the definitions to try to figure that out for the layperson. Okay, um, next thing, then. There was an issue of enclosed porches, the porches over time that had been enclosed either illegally or with permission. Um, how are those going to be handled going forward?
I do not know what you're asking.
I know what he's asking.
Okay.
Okay, I think I can help, Werner.
What?
I think I can help.
Go ahead, Jack.
Okay, the way, the way, the only way to do it is, you know, what's, what was there previously? They have to establish, uh, the validity of that enclosed porch.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, it'd be for the zoning board, and if they don't, uh, there's the potential for having them have to take out what was added on to make it an enclosed porch.
Okay, good, so there, there is a legal remedy for that?
Oh, yes, yes. Somebody brings it to the town's attention, obviously, you know, somebody's got to bring it to the attention. So it's brought in, there's a zoning violation, uh, I lived next door to, uh, 704 Fifth Avenue for 40 years, and 10 years ago, they enclosed that porch.
Gotcha.
Records, and there's no, no record of them coming before zoning board for variances to enclose the porch, uh, got a problem.
Okay, great, because as, as we all know, that's a double violation, increases, increases the, uh, floor area and violates the setback at the same time.
I mean, whatever the violations are, they are, but that's the, that's the mechanism for dealing with that, and I understand it happens.
Right.
It happens, yeah.
Okay. Um, now, let me go to page 29 for a second. Let me scroll down here, 29, uh, under where the townhouses are. 12, 13, 14, 18, 22, 26, 7, 8, 9, okay, page 29. Um, where it talks about G, G2, each dwelling shall have a stoop or and porch. Um, is that really what you want to say? That might be just a typo, because I'm not understanding what that's implying.
Just needs a backslash.
Ah, so the implication is that a stoop would be an element without a covering over it? And a porch, and a porch would be something that's covered?
Yes. No, Donna's saying no.
No? This is an awkward sentence to begin with.
Yeah, it should be and slash or, if that's what you meant, not or and. Go ahead. Go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, that's a and slash or.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to remember if, what the clarification was between a stoop or a porch, but I think it's more that there's a.
Well, I know what I think a stoop is.
That's, yeah.
Having lived in Jersey City for many years before we moved to Asbury Park, I know what a stoop is.
Exactly, good, 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 Jack. Um, so can, can we maybe flesh this out in the definitions if it's not defined? Because this is going to cause problems.
Why do you think it would cause a problem?
Interpretive, an interpretive problem. What's a stoop? A porch may be defined in the code, but I don't know what a stoop is.
Okay. Still trying to get to the right.
Yeah, we, we can add that to the definition section.
And then someone has to make a judgment as to what a stoop is?
Why, why would it be a judgment if there's a definition?
Well, can you define what it is at this point? What's a stoop?
Stoop is a set of stairs that leads to the front door.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's a set of stairs leading to the front.
No, no, that's, that's a stoop, but I get it. We'll, we'll come up with a definition. We will, I understand where you're coming from.
My understanding of a stoop is it has a landing at the top. It's a set of stairs to a landing in front of the door, correct?
Yeah.
It's not just a set of stairs, that's just a set of stairs.
You can put their folding chair, right. I know what you're talking about.
You, you got me. So I'm sugge, I'm looking at this from a layperson, which I'm not, as how do we interpret this? You hand this to somebody, say, here's the code, and they read this. You can't leave it up to some, you know.
It's not subjective, but we will add a definition and clarify it.
Okay, great. Let me move on, then. Um, okay, on, uh, on page 15, H4, the discussion.
Wait, could I go backwards?
Yeah, just go back, because that's the way my thought process was working. It, go to 15, H4, the discussion about, uh, complimentary facades.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let me get to 15 here. 15, H4. Okay, now, the way it's, the way it's structured now, this sentence, the way it's worded, this could be interpreted two different ways. Uh, the way that the board interpreted it is, to my understanding, that the sides should be consistent. Side A, B, and C should all be consistent with each other. There's another way, there's another way to read this. I'm just suggesting that each individual side should be consistent in its own right. What, what was the intended meaning here? And what would you like it to say?
What would I like it to say?
The board had a discussion, and I, and I think, and I think a decision was, was, uh, arrived at. So.
We're going to use the word complimentary.
Okay, but first, all right, I'm just suggesting that somebody used consistent for a reason way back when.
It's not way back when, this is a new addition to the zoning ordinance.
Oh, this is a new one, okay. Well, somebody used the word consistent for a reason in this new ordinance, then. I think maybe they were suggesting that in a single side, it be consistent as opposed to having half of one material and half of another. Have you considered that possibility?
No.
No? Okay, all right. We suggested that's a possible interpretation if you don't fix it. Um, next?
Yeah, we, we, we just, we've agreed that we will be fixing that.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, now, there was discussion about, in the new zoning, when we were discussing the zoning and the zoning map, that certain zones are are now covered by redevelopment areas, and therefore you could remove the descriptions of those zones because they're now embedded in a redevelopment area. Is, doesn't the redevelopment area have a limited lifespan? Don't they expire?
They do.
Okay, so if you remove the underlying zoning, which is not enforced because of the redevelopment area, what does it become once the redevelopment area expires?
The previous zoning.
But you're removing that in some instances.
No.
It'll be reinstated, that's all.
Yeah, it's what Jack said.
What did Jack say?
I said it'll be reinstated. It'll be, be another ordinance passed supplementing it, saying upon expiration of this plan, taking, which takes effect on January 1, 2022, let's say, uh, prior zoning ordinance will be applicable. They'll create an ordinance, they're just, that's what they'll do.
The prior or some new one might be affected.
Or a new one, yeah, if they decide to do some new zoning in there, they'll, they'll, they'll do it that way.
Okay, so, so legally, we're comfortable removing the underlying zoning, even though by law it's ineffective at this point, and then have to reestablish it later anyway when the plan expires?
Yes, I am comfortable with that.
Okay.
It may be slightly different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, just want to make sure we're understanding how that's going to work. Okay.
May I ask a question, though? You're not removing the underlying zoning because the, the, the areas subject to redevelopment still have a zone. If it expires, it just, you look at the zoning map and then you know what the zoning is.
No, I heard testimony that descriptions of the underlying zoning in some areas were being deleted.
No.
That's what I heard testimony to.
I think there's a nuance there that you're missing.
No, not at all.
Yes.
Why don't you answer this, Michelle?
That was not testified to. For our zoning map currently does not have underlying zoning. And in my career, it's only if it's an overlay zone. If it's not an overlay zone, it's overridden. And the day that if the council lets the redevelopment plan expire, it goes back to the zoning that was previously, previously, that, that's, was previously there.
Okay, I'll give an example. There was some mention about, um, arena spaces on the waterfront. You wholesale deleted the references to arenas being permitted in the waterfront. That's a removal of the underlying zoning.
No, it's not. I disagree. Underlying zoning for the waterfront would be something like, you know, the B, the B1 or the R1, not a, a specific, um, use called out.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, can we go to the map, then, um, that you had up earlier, the zoning map itself?
Do you want me to pull it up now?
Yeah, it would be helpful to everybody. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, if we could, if you, can you zoom in, or are you stuck in that mode?
Um, no, I can zoom in.
Up at the north end there, where the bridge goes over to, uh, Lock Arbor, by the, uh, P2 in that area. Um, okay, so orange is B, is my understanding. What is that sliver there of orange right before the bridge on Main Street going across? What is that supposed to be?
That's called a drafting error.
Ah, okay, we're going to fix that, correct?
Of course.
Okay, it wasn't, you don't need to say, of course.
We didn't, we didn't get to the map section yet, but go ahead, keep asking questions, no.
I thought, I thought you brought the map in as evidence already once, okay.
No, well, everything is in evidence currently per what we need to do for a, um, virtual meeting. But I brought the map up earlier when, um, as, as a point of reference, but of course, we could, we'll fix that drafting error.
Okay, great. Okay, then also, the P2 directly adjacent to that, you see how Memorial Drive continues north all the way to the lake? But it's layered over in blue. You should probably fix that, too, uh, I think. That's actually a public right-of-way, Memorial Drive. It's not part of the school. It was never, it was never given over to the school.
Understood.
Okay, um, and then there are other scattered orange properties that would appear to be B zones, but I don't think that they are.
No, if you look at the, um, no, they should be in the table as the scattered site redevelopment area.
Yeah, this is, it's a slightly similar color.
Yeah, so that's a rendering error also with the color, because they look orange, the, the orange just looks all alike the way I'm looking at it.
That is not an error, it can be a clarification.
No, no, a rendering error on my computer, I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Um, so maybe, maybe that red color and that orange color need to be more distinguishable from each other, because people are going to be looking at this on various computers.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right, uh, the Main Street redevelopment area. Um, the, again, the north end where we were looking earlier, uh, over by the bridge, the boat launch, that little, um, triangular piece of property there?
Yes.
That's a public park. Why is it not identified as a public park?
If something's in the Main Street redevelopment area, we did not change the zoning.
I'm sorry, you didn't change it? What do you mean?
We did not change the zoning or the boundaries of any redevelopment plans.
That's exactly my point. That's a public park. That should be a P1, green.
If you look at this map, part of Sunset Park is also in the Main Street redevelopment plan per the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, my next point, exactly, that's actually a public park.
You're supposed to ask questions, not make points.
Well, you're, you're getting ahead of me. Okay, why, why are these public parks not green and identified as P1?
Because that would override the redevelopment plans.
You're testifying that the redevelopment plan rezones public park property to be something else?
No, they're covered, there's zoning is covered in the redevelopment plan, which is not an overlay, so it's shown on the map as redevelopment plan area.
Okay, so again, from the layperson's perspective, they're, they're handed a zoning map, it's impossible to tell that these are public parks.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, oh, okay, um, all the way down by, uh, CBD, Central Business District, the extreme right-hand edge where Cookman Avenue and Grand Avenue converge?
Yes.
Okay, there's a small triangle there with a, uh, a Civil War memorial. What is that zoned as?
Borderfront Redevelopment Plan.
Oh, you're, are you aware that that's also a public park?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are you, are you intending to identify that as a public park?
No, I am not. Because even though it may make it clear to the public, it has legal ramifications.
Legal ramifications of, of what, being something other than a park?
About not being in the redevelopment zone.
Okay.
The concept is consistent. Go ahead, Donna.
Sorry. Again, the use of the land. And how it's zoned are two different things, it may be a public park. But it's in a redevelopment area, so it's subject to those planned dynamics. Just like part of Sunset Park is within the Main Street redevelopment area. It's subject to whatever the governing body decides is appropriate from within the plan. Same thing in the waterfront redevelopment area, yeah, there's public land within the waterfront redevelopment area. It may be a public park, it may be land that's gonna be redeveloped. That's a use, how it gets used is defined by the redevelopment area plan. On this map. The zoning map, it needs to distinguish what the zones are. So the waterfront redevelopment area, Main Street redevelopment area, Cookman. Those are the applicable zoning for those lots, or in those cases, public lands. Yeah, it may be a public park, it still has zoning applied to it, which is covered by those redevelopment, um, documents.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, okay, let's go to, uh, page seventeen and eighteen.
Oh, just, just, just one thing, if I, if I may, it, if you're gonna. I'm assuming we're not gonna go back to that map, because it's hard for us to keep going back and forth.
Well, we may, we may have to, because seventeen and eighteen, seventeen and eighteen deal with, uh, more of this, uh, designations. But if we go to seventeen and eighteen, I think it'll become clear what my point is. Okay, seventeen, here, I'm looking at. Oh, I have to go all the way down to the bottom. Uh, the area where P1, P2 municipal property was altered.
Yes.
Okay, seven, is that seventeen and eighteen, am I on the right spot?
Yes.
Alright, are there two seventeens and eighteens?
It depends, as long as you're looking at the same document we've been looking at a whole time, there's, there's a page seventeen, we're on page seventeen. With the P1.
Yeah, okay, I gotta get, I gotta get to that page seventeen.
Okay.
Right, so we're talking about section thirty dash seventy-one point eight?
Let's see, seventeen, here we are, got it, okay. Um, yeah, thirty seventy-one eight, and then let's start instead at thirty seventy-two, which was struck out completely. Which is on page eighteen, thirty dash seventy. The prior, the prior definitions here. Um. So your testimony was that you struck out this entire section? And replaced it with the other one because of some inconsistency, what, what was the inconsistency or the problem with the thirty seventy-two?
That the P1, P2, and P4 districts didn't match up with what was on the zoning map.
In, in what way? P1 was not-
Schools were not labeled properly, there were schools missing. What is the point? I, I think, I don't wanna go back and forth just for, um. I don't know for what, I, I, I mean, if you, I know you're doing it this way because you have to ask questions. But I'm not sure what the point is.
Based on your explanation just now that the maps did not match these designations. Why strike out these designations entirely in this section?
Because what we did makes better sense.
Kindly explain.
But I think that Michelle has answered your question.
I don't think so, okay, let me ask a more specific question, um. Let's go to the other section then.
What's the other section?
Uh, the new one, thirty seventy-one eight. Okay, so here you've added all P1 zoning districts shall be used as public parks.
What's on the map now?
Okay.
Would the map change?
You've also indicated P2 shall be schools. You've eliminated municipal property.
Yes.
What was that, what was that previously?
It depends on the property.
No, in thirty seventy-two, what was municipal property?
I don't know.
Well, look at it, seventy-two says P2. Was municipal property essentially.
Right.
This is Donna.
Yeah.
So thirty seventy-one point eight is not a new section, it's an existing section. Thirty seventy-two is also an existing section in the ordinance. We consolidated these two sections because there are discrepancies between. School land is also municipal land, is also public purposes. So we consolidated these things, we also didn't wanna display things like the municipal complex. Um, or the train station as being public land in general, they didn't need to have public land zoning. So we consolidated those tracts in the zoning ordinance so that they were more understandable as simply parks. And schools and those-
Why, why would you not want to identify public property?
What public property are we-
Most of those public lands are now covered by redevelopment zones.
Why is this an issue? This should not be an issue.
Well, I'm trying to ask questions to make everybody kinda open their eyes here a little bit. But if you just want, uh, Chair, Madam Chairman, can I just act as, as a witness and testify at this point and I'll tell you what the issue is?
No, you're, you're, I'm sorry, you're part of the public, you're gonna ask questions.
Well, I'm asking for some leeway then.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not the chairwoman, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm raising the, I'm raising the issue and I'm trying to elicit. Some thought here amongst the members by asking questions, which is what I'm, have a right to do.
And I, and I think that we, we hear them.
Okay, so.
Wait, let her finish.
The test, so testimony is that-
Let her finish.
Okay.
Done.
I'm sorry.
We, we, we heard you, we, we provided the explanation. I don't know what else we can do. We've already, you've asked the question, we asked the question of what the logic behind it was. And whether you agree with the logic or not, I understand you may not, but that's the logic.
Okay, just clarify for me then, to, to the, to the. Um, the witnesses, what is the logic of not identifying municipally owned exempt properties specifically?
I'll tell you, because unless it's got a specific purpose like a park or school. They should be subject to zoning. Let's take for example, the City Hall complex, it's in the Main Street redevelopment plan. If someday we decide to redevelop that complex, there are standards in there.
Don't you think that this makes it difficult for someone who doesn't know that? And the detailed reasoning behind it from a planning perspective?
Is someone, is this the person going to buy City Hall? Are they gonna buy City Hall?
Doesn't that make it extremely difficult for the general public to understand what public properties are and are not?
No, becau- no, it does not.
It's not a function of the zoning map.
It's right, the zoning map has a certain function.
That's, that's not the purpose of the zoning map. The zoning map is to tell you what zoning regulations apply to which properties, not to tell you who owns what property.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Let me just see if there's anyone else that has a hand up. Uh, I don't see anyone else that has a hand up. Okay. Alright, do we wanna go to, um, definitions?
Yes. Trying to get the share screen back. I don't know what I just clicked. Okay. Another important part of our zoning ordinance, but I have to say, our old definitions were, were very good. It was a very thorough section compared to other zoning ordinances. So I have to say, what we did was, again, some modernization, some tweaks rather than a complete overhaul of our definitions. We eliminated the adult use definitions because especially the, those uses are not permitted and. Usually it refers to a state definition, so these are not. These are not necessary anymore in our, our definition section.
Yeah, this is, this is Michael, uh, I just wanted to reflect on the adult uses that. That there's a statute that deals with sexually oriented businesses, so we've aligned the ordinance to the definitions in the statute. And, um, and then have, um, eliminated the older definitions, so it's now consistent with the statute.
Thank you, thanks, that's important.
Thank you. So, the definition of arcade was changed. Again, to match what was in the ordinance, but in light of what we're gonna change in the ordinance. We will go ahead and change this definition.
Michelle?
Yes.
Where I forget, just above that, application for development.
Uh huh.
I see that you probably pulled that from the MLUL section. But, uh, omitted in there was cluster development, I think that comes in either before or after the reference to subdivision plot. But later on down on, uh. A, a, a lower section on another page, you actually define cluster development, so. I think, I think that was an omission by, just an omission error.
Okay, um, let me, let me make the note.
Yeah, cuz you pulled that, for application for development, that comes from the exact definition in the municipal and use law.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you. The de- we added a definition for balcony, so it's clear. Basement got modification, again, to make it clearer. Um, rather than six and a half feet, mo- seven feet is what it really should be nowadays. And, um, we struck the language of use for-
Sorry.
If use for busi- we struck if use for business, industrial office or residential purposes, cuz the basement is a basement is a basement. It's still a part of a structure and shouldn't be tied with a use. Bed and breakfast definition got an update, it's now a bed and breakfast residence. And it complies more, um, with what we consider a, a modern day B and B. Group pub, rather than having a, a definition that could conflict with the state definition, it now aligns. Contractor yard will strike now because we have now eliminated contractor yard as a use. Craft distillery is a new definition to fit the new use. And again, it reflects, um, the state definition of what a craft distillery is. Deck, we clear, based upon, um. Board applications, applications from residents, we, we now have a definition for deck. Which is different than a porch. Density, the definition became much more simple, as it should be.
Hold on. Did, did we pass Development Review Committee?
Yes, here, I, I brought it back.
Okay, where?
This was one we didn't touch.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. What is it, what does the second line mean? What does it mean, pointed by the planning board upon recommendation of the city manager or city planner?
Yeah, or, or what is the Development Review Committee?
Let's just get rid of it.
Yes, but I, I think that's been existing in the, in the ordinance and it's never existed.
I think, I think what we now, we have the Design Review Committee, but I got a feeling that that may be what's taken its place. Over the years.
Yes, it has.
Evolved into that, so, and that's, that we don't have to have in an ordinance. We're allowed to have subcommittees at the planning board, and so take that out.
So wait, give me a second, make my note.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Family, we revise to be compliant with, um, definition of family as defined by the courts.
Okay.
Garage repair was struck because there was a more, we, um. Because we, we put in more modern definitions. The home occupation also got a bit of an upgrade with a clarification of conducted by the resident. Home occupation major received a definition while we had none before and we should have. We struck home professional office because it's no longer exists in our zoning. As that termed that way. Household, again, received a, a update per, per the, per case law. Of what a household's supposed to be. Per zoning.
Sorry, I've been talking on mute, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric.
No, no, it was my fault, I was yakking away and on mute, um. Uh, for, how does a, um. A doctor's office or a dentist's office in a home? Get dealt with, or at all?
Well, that's the thing, now, it's, it's not permitted in the same way we permitted before. It is, it's permitted, actually only now in a B zone, because.
Okay.
Is, I was gonna say, because that. That profession has changed on how doctors now can conduct, I shouldn't say conduct business. But it's almost, a lot of doctors nowadays do not have offices in their homes anymore.
Right, um, however, extant businesses such as dentists and doctors may continue in residential zones.
Where they existed before.
Where they existed before, okay, okay.
Let me go back, or where was I?
Lot coverage? Lot coverage?
Wait, I'm going back. Lot coverage.
Yeah, there was some question about that in the past, um. Internal interpretation was that decks wouldn't be included in, I guess, the calculation for that. Uh, where planners took the position that it was. So I wanna make sure there's no inconsistency between the staff and the planners.
No, I mean, we, we took care of that.
Been resolved?
Yes.
Okay, then, no, keep going.
Office medical, this is a new definition to clarify office from office medical because we, it's a different animal. It's a different animal in our zoning ordinance. And because it's a different animal on, than a regular office building, usually it has more cars. But it brings more cars and it's operation hours tend to be different. So it, it's defined differently cuz now it's called out in zoning separately.
Is that the same as urgent care?
No, urgent care is gonna, will, has its own definition. Porch, porch got refined. Where now it used to include open balconies, balconies has its own definition. New definition for sexual oriented business and we struck sexual encounter establishment, whatever that really is. Signs are struck because now sign definitions are in its, as we reviewed before, they are now in their own section for definitions.
So, but, but to be clear, the only reason that they were deleted from this section is because we're dealing with them in the other section. The reality is they should really be recombined with all the definitions. And maybe that's a decision to be made, but they, I don't, I don't like having different definitions in different areas of the ordinances. I think it's really good to keep all the definitions in one section. So even though they weren't dealt with here, they were dealt with through the sign ordinance.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
Clear soil erosion, it's freehold soil comfort, that's a modernization, it's no longer Monmouth County, it's freehold. Stacked parking now has a definition. That's a modernization or so we, we can, um, yeah, it's, it'll come up in the parking section. Story, we eliminate basement from story because basement is now taking care of in, in the other definition.
And you'll, you'll add stoop?
We will add the stoop.
Add the stoop.
Yeah.
Well, just when we talk about the definition of stoop, this is Michael. I think that there was really something in the discussion about this as to whether or not it is the board's intention to have, to allow a stoop or a porch, or whether there's a preference for a porch which has a roof. Stoop does not necessarily have a roof. So if there's a preference for a porch, we shouldn't say stoop, we should just say porch. So I, I think that we need to make sure we have that decision before we add the definition. If you want the flexibility to have a stoop, that's, that's a board decision.
This is Alexis. I think a stoop is an acceptable alternative or typology that we would want the flexibility for. I do agree that it is stairs leading to a landing.
Right.
Um, but yeah, in particular in certain, I mean, if we're building townhomes, right, isn't part of that, that may also be a stoop?
Yeah.
Right, and it may not be, and it may not be covered. And it wouldn't, in a lot of cases, it won't be covered.
So we'll update the, we'll make a definition.
Okay.
Tandem parking has its own definition now, different from stock parking. Townhouse has an upgrade in definition. And actually, I don't see the urgent care definition, even though we talked about putting one in, we're gonna add one.
Oh, there is one there.
So, did I scroll past it? Thank you, Mark. Should have had a coffee this afternoon. So that's it with definitions, because like I said, our definition section was pretty good, unlike other parts of our zoning ordinance. So I will take any questions on definitions.
Anything from the planning board? Any other questions regarding definitions? Or concerns? No? Okay, uh, let's open it up.
Wait, all right, that was, this is
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alexis, I'm sorry. So this was a definition that was used actually previously, so I don't know if it matters, but there was something about the various appurtenances would be consistent with the Victorian era. Do you need to define what that actually means? In terms of a style or is that something that you would judge?
Oh, I'm not sure. What definition am I going to?
It's back in, I'll, I'll look it up, but it was back in, um, hold on. This is gonna take me a second because it was way back when. And it was something that we've already like considered, but it basically had to do with, um, hold on. This was something we considered way earlier and it had to do with porches and huh, it's gonna take me a second to find.
Okay.
You can move on to, to opening it up to questions.
Um, right, then we would open it up, open up to a public question. If anybody has a, the public has any questions about definitions that were testified to, uh, please raise your hand and we'll open it up to public questions about definitions. There's, uh, okay, all right, city historian. Please open it up. Unmute. Warner, we're not, we're not hearing you if you're, if you're speaking.
No, he's now, he's good now.
Go ahead. Warner?
He should be, he's unmuted.
What, hello? Warner? Okay, why don't we go back? We have one other up the Warner? We're not hearing you. Okay, if you'd like to mute whoever is driving. Um, and the next person in line is a, a phone number ending in three fifty. Do you have any questions about definitions, please?
Yeah, honestly, knowing four hundred D electric drive apartment five D Asbury Park, New Jersey, like to ask the witness on definitions. When, when you're doing what you're doing with the definitions, modifying, upgrading, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are you, are you doing that pretty much by yourself or does that involve the city manager, the city lawyer? Anything? Or is it just what you do and then you come before this body now? And the public hears it for the first time and the board seems to hear it for the first time. So it's sort of like
No, no, ask the question, end the question.
I thought, well, that was the question.
All right, so let her answer. Let her answer.
No, I mean, it's, it's no, we have a committee, we have a, we have a zoning committee, our consultants, um, are very up on the case law with some of the definitions and they, they also, we also look at other municipalities.
Yeah, well, um, I, I'm gonna ask that when, when I hear you mention other municipalities. Would, would it be understandable to you that some of the examples you use as municipalities, some of us in Asbury find problematic municipalities, like when you refer to Newark and, and other places? Or Montclair, I mean, that's what they are, you know, or Hoboken. What, what I'm wondering and I'm asking the question, why is it you look to other municipalities to create for Asbury when Asbury is its own entity?
We looked out there at municipalities more for consistency. We look to make sure that our, you know, and that our definitions make sense.
But why do you have to do that? I mean, we're a self-contained government and we have lawyers and we have boards. Who cares what Hoboken's doing?
No one said anything about Hoboken.
Oh, I mean, I mean, you refer to other municipalities constantly, don't you?
No.
Who's that now?
That's me. She didn't say anything about other municipalities.
She didn't say anything?
That's not part of her testimony.
Okay. Okay, so in other words, the way you answered my question was, when you're creating all these modifications and this definitions and the surgery on the definitions to bring them now before the public and the board for adoption. Your statement was correct that you're doing it with a zoning committee.
Correct.
Okay, and can I ask who's on that zoning committee?
Jack, can he ask?
Sure, but I'm not gonna let you go much farther than you are now.
Okay, so who's, who's, who's on the committee?
It's our chairwoman, it's Clark K. and Hens.
Oh, oh, wait, I'm sorry, the chairwoman?
Let her finish.
I didn't hear her, I didn't hear her.
Okay, say it again.
Okay, our chairwoman, our vice chairperson.
Well, who's the chairwoman?
Barbara Krzak. Barbara Krzak.
Okay, well, you don't mind telling me, thank you. Go ahead. The vice chairman?
Yes.
Who's that?
It's another board, they're board members, they're board members.
With no names?
Yeah, they have names.
Well, can you tell me? Can you tell me?
Rick Lambert, Ms. Ms. Souter, Ms. Clayton and Clark K. and Hens.
And who?
Clark K. and Hens are board members.
Board plan, okay. All right, thank you. That wasn't, that wasn't so difficult. And I thank you, Mr. Serpico, for allowing her to to tell me that. And I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Hey, um, it looks like the city historian has, has, hand up, let's see if we can get him on.
Are you there?
Are you there? All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
No, yes.
I, I had to switch devices, my other device rebooted itself. Kicked me off. Okay, can we go to the, um, design committee, uh, develop, development review committee on page seven?
Yes.
Let me know when you've got that.
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay, I can't, I can't see, okay. And then I'm going to answer or, or suggest that you look at chapter thirty dash thirty nine point one. Uh, thirty nine point two, I'm sorry. Thirty dash thirty nine point two in the city code. And that will answer all your questions about what this is.
The board does know what it is. The board is aware what it is.
They are? They did not indicate, they indicated they wanted, they wanted it eliminated.
Yes, but they're aware what it is.
That's not what I heard as testimony.
We'll look at it, we'll look at it, we'll look at it.
Thirty, thirty nine dot two defines what the development committee is, has nothing to do
Question.
Yes. Does it have anything to do with appointment or recommendation by the city manager?
No.
It does not, okay. Are you intending to remove this?
We're gonna look into it.
Do you think it would be a good idea to keep this and actually make use of it?
We, we'll, we'll, we'll look into it. We'll
Okay. All right, folks, look at thirty, thirty nine point two, that's all, thank you.
That we don't strike one without the other. How about that?
I'm gonna suggest you don't strike it at all, but you make use of it. Thank you.
Anything else or? All right, I don't see anyone else that has, have their hands up, so we can close that section of the discussion.
Okay. I'm going to go to what I think is gonna be simple. Get it up on my screen. Yeah. Uh, start share. Draft community design standards. This was very important, we we were told by board members us, we, that this was still important. This is important to people to have these draft community design standards by planning board members, zoning board members. Um, but there was some confusing language in this section as to the applicability. I believe that this amendment clarifies where it pertains to. Even though everything is underlined here, the truth is, um, almost all the language is the same. And that the strike, it's more of the strikeouts here at the top. Um, where it doesn't apply. But the intent of this is that this is going to apply to historic districts that are federal and state as well as all properties in the R one, R two, R three and B. So that's the big change. It's clarified what this pertains to because the, it's more so there was confusion in the past of which, which properties it pertained to. And it was only stuff before the planning board or the zoning board, whether it was historic district or all residential, was commercial involved. So that's really all I have to say about the section tonight.
Michelle, just for, this is Alexis, um, just for clarity, because it came up previously. So the exhibit that and, and the, what was posted online, just so you know, it's the same language as yours, but it doesn't have the same underlines. It has strikeouts of previous, um, language.
Well, then I should put, I'm sorry, I should put the correct one up on the screen.
Just wanted to let you know so that it's, I'm sure it will come up in questions.
No, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm supposed to put up the, um, the correct one. I apologize that I do not know why I pull, I pulled this one out of the, the shared drive folder. But I am going to ask, um, I hit stop share. And I'm going to ask, um, Donna, if she can share hers. Are you able to pull it up? Or Michael?
I do not have it on the machine that I'm using for the Zoom.
How about Michael? Do you have it?
I don't have it on, uh, on my machine.
Okay.
Email it to you, Michelle?
Yeah, well, yes.
You, you need the community design standards?
Yes.
I have it, I'm glad to share.
Eric, thank you, and I'm apologize for that tonight. I could do it more together.
Uh, one second. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, that's the same one.
It is the same one.
Oh, is there a different one?
Well, maybe I'm looking at something, um,
Yeah, actually.
Mine has, does not have like every paragraph underlined. It only has like strikeouts and additions.
So, the, right, and it's the same. It's, what I said, it's not new language ended up being underlined.
Right.
But it's all new, the strikeouts are really just the zones.
Yeah, I, and I think we can totally work with this. I just thought it might come up in
Thank you.
Questions, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions about this section?
Um, I do. Um, I, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Um, similar to, you know, the, the master plan reexamination report and the master plan and I think just good governance is telling us that materiality and building technology and energy efficiency, um, are important parts of, you know, our responsibility to the environment. Let's just leave it at that. And while I do agree that additions should be harmonious, um, I, I do think that the materiality for additions in rear yards are overly restrictive and may discourage both architectural experimentation and the inclusion of high performance materials. And this relates specifically to paragraph, I'll sort of fast forward here, it's under, um, I'll sort of fast forward here, it's under, um, where I saw it coming into, um, it says must use common materials with the main house, so one-story additions are limited to the rear yard, which are not visible from street-facing portions of, you know, they're, they don't face the street, and if somebody wanted to extend their home or structure, using high-performance materials in those areas may not lend themselves to be common to historic, to older structures that are not in historic districts.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I would advocate that we leave some leeway for high-performance building materials, greater levels of glazing, things that would allow contemporary architectural expression in exist, in additions to existing buildings.
Eric, which, is that, um?
Um, that's a thirty sixty-four point five A, and, and it does relate to B, though not specifically, oh no, it does say it in the, in the, in the B paragraph as well.
This is Donna, um, so, again, from the version you have, you can't tell, but that is the current existing language in the ordinance, and it is unchanged, uh, going forward, the terminology of common, um, common materials, now, you know, we can make a very simple, uh, modification to the language, and, you know, what is common materials, does common materials mean, you know, if it's wood, it has to be wood, or does common materials mean that it has that, like we said in the, um, in the B district, that it's compatible?
Yeah, complementary or compatible, I think is, yeah, and, and I, you know, I also want to point out that the extension of existing roof lines, um, may discourage things that require low slopes, like green roofs or extensive green roofs, where that might do some, you know, where people may be interested in providing that as a mitigation method for, um, stormwater runoff. So if you have a, you know, a home that has a, a, a high-slope roof, you, and you want to add an extension in the rear yard, I don't think a flat roof should be out of hand rejected.
Oh, I'm great, I don't, I, I didn't see it as an out-of-hand rejection, because these are, um, design, these are softer than, like, these are designed standard waivers, not variances.
Okay, so, just as long as it's not, what I don't want it to do is discourage experimentation, both architecturally and from the building performance standard, you know, the perspective, to allow people to include new technologies, new whatever, um, a, and it also relates to the building orientations, it may not make sense, you know, on a south-facing facade to have a lot of glass, and, um, that may not be common to the building. That, so there's my, just my point is I, I don't want it to be too restrictive, but it should also maintain the integrity and the quality as seen from the street.
Right.
This is Jen Souter, I'm sorry, it's not quite back here, but I, um, agree with what Eric was just saying, but I also wanted to mention, the, the version that I have is October 2nd, does that help anything? That's the one that was in the, um, it's, and it is, it looks different than the one on the screen.
You're right.
Donna, I'm sorry, uh, Michelle, the October 2nd version is, um, the content is the same, it's just, instead of showing it as all-new, underlying as new text, because it's moving into a new section of the ordinance, it's moving out of zoning and into the design standard section, so, as Michelle said, these deviations would be, uh, exceptions, not variances, going forward.
The one on the screen should match now.
Yep, yep, there you go.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Eric.
No problem.
Does, does the one up now match, if not, I don't think we should continue, just because if the public doesn't have what we're talking about.
No, it matches now, it does.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Eric.
Does anybody else have any other thing, anything else, the planning board members on this section? No? Okay, let's, uh, open it up for public, uh, question? Anyone? Uh, I see we have, uh, hand up, um, ending in three fifty, please unmute.
Oh, yeah, Ernestino, four hundred D O eight Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, uh, the question is from Mr. Alonso, uh, I, I think you testified that, uh, in your surgery, if you will, or whatever you're doing with the, uh, the plans here, that you pretty much are working with a close-knit group of boards and committees, uh, and I'm just wondering, how much public input or queries do you put out?
All right, listen, stop, 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 stop.
Okay.
Ask questions related to her testimony on the draft community design standards, specific to that, not to that. Okay, you already asked questions about the committee, gave you some answers.
Okay.
Ask, ask questions about her testimony regarding this section.
Okay, okay, well, so, so when you are mentioning things like common and, and, uh, and now it's coming up, uh, uh, I don't know, what was it called, high-tech composites and et cetera, and, and leeway to experiment, uh, I'm just wondering, wh- where was that created in, in, in what you're doing, and was it done strictly with the committees?
I never said that.
Well, I don't know, I, I thought someone just went through the whole thing, where you're talking about a shed in the backyard with a flat roof and what kind of materials?
That was with the board members, that was a board member.
So, okay, so, I notice, I don't know how someone could figure out what, what's going on, I mean, it's like you got the wrong things up.
No, 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 time out, ask questions about her testimony, not about comments made by the board, that's a warning.
Okay.
All right.
That's a why?
Ask, ask the questions, if you don't ask the right questions, you're gonna be muted.
Oh, you said that's a warning?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So your, uh, building standard where you talk about common to the house, does that mean the materials would be similar to or exact to the house? What do you mean by common to?
Meaning, um, prevalent on the house, common to the house, some material on the house.
Okay, so, so I'll ask you, was there any reference on your part, or anything going into this interpretation of the design standard that's gonna be changed to include anything other than common to the house, which means, if somebody's gonna build something, i- if it's common to the house, it's gonna look like a smaller version, like a shed, that almost looks like the house with materials, but are you changing that to include anything else now? In other words, is common standard gonna remain in the design standard interpretation for now?
Yes.
It is, okay, so, any mention of other materials, high-tech composites, et cetera, i- it, it's not part of this effort and definition?
We're not talking, there's no language going in here about high-tech composites.
Oh, okay, so I just overheard that from a board member as a suggestion, but it's got no bearing on, you're pretty much leaving this to common to the house, which means, I think the public's gonna understand.
Don't tell us what it means, you're now characterizing.
Well, I'm asking you, okay, so I'm asking you, uh, uh, is common gonna be the standard in the design standard?
You already asked that question, she already answered it.
Okay, all right, really, I'm as confused, I'm as confused as you all are.
We're not confused.
Oh, if anybody listens.
Never mind, all right, stop, mute him, please, mute him, Mr. Miniole, you're either gonna ask relevant questions, or you're not gonna speak. You've already been muted once this evening, we could have carried it through on this witness, but we didn't, if you want to ask relevant questions, please do so, if not, then be done, go right ahead.
Oh, yes, is, is there a, a comment section coming up tonight?
Yes.
Not sure.
We're hoping.
Is there?
We're hoping that we'll, we'll get to a comment section, yes.
Okay, good, I think I'd be better off in the comment section, so I'll just listen and wait.
Okay, all right, next person up is city historian, please unmute.
Hello again, folks.
Hello.
Okay, you can hear me, great, um, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian, uh, my first question is, what section is this now going into? I see the, the section number has changed, although it's not obvious from this document here, it went from sixty-five over to sixty-four, what effect does that have?
It's none.
It has none? Um, I find that hard to believe, what, sixty-five, what is, what is the prior location of this ordinance?
I don't know what you mean.
What heading is it under, is, all right, let me, let me be direct, why was this moved from zoning, why was this removed from the zoning section?
Because it's, no, it's design standards, they're subjective.
Subjective, you call these subjective?
Not that, okay.
This is Donna, this is Donna, the master plan recommended these standards be removed from the zoning section and instead be moved into the design standards, and the effect will be that deviations will require a design exception rather than a variance.
Okay, so it, it makes it easier for people not to comply with this, correct?
No.
Manner of speaking.
So, one witness says no, the other says in a manner of speaking, which is.
That's a matter of opinion.
But I was gonna say, a- again, the type, this type of language is prevalent in a design standard section, these are design standards, and we're applying them to basically, except for redevelopment areas, the whole city, that's a large blanket. They're well-suited as design standards.
Are you aware that these were originally put into zoning to make them, uh, have some teeth and be enforceable?
They are enforceable.
Donna, you're muted. I couldn't hear what you're commenting.
Donna, so, yeah, thirty years ago, the effect was, we, the city wanted them to have that level of authority, to be, deviations should have a variance, it's not thirty years ago anymore, we did a master plan reexamination, a full master plan resulted, the recommendations through that process were to change these from being in the zoning section to being in design standards.
It doesn't, the master plan also indicate that increased preservation efforts should take place to preserve the historic character of Asbury Park?
Yes.
Yes, but this was a specific recommendation.
But I do not see this in conflict with that, with the historic preservation recommendation, I do not.
It makes it a design exception versus a requirement, that's what you're telling me.
Yes, and so if you have a deviation, if you have an application that comes before the board and it, you don't comply, you still have to satisfy basically the positive criteria, so, you know, you still, they still need to plead a pretty strong case for reason to deviate.
Okay, all right, during this process, in, in evaluating this, um, did you ask for any input from the cities, city historian? Okay, thank you.
I take it that, in the zoning portion, no, but definitely there was input on the master plan level.
I'm done, thank you.
Good, um, all right, we have one more section.
Hey, uh, Eric, will you stop screen sharing, and I will keep working? We really didn't do much change to parking, it's still two spaces for a single family, three for two, multifamily parking is still based upon bedroom count. We put in a section about tandem parking that may be permitted in multifamily developments, the ordinance was moot on tandem parking before, so this gives it, um, a little bit more, because now an applicant has to show that they can, well, they can have tandem parking, but they have to demonstrate that they can jockey the cars safely, and planting areas, um, the language for buffer strips has changed. We say that i- it's now actually for all parking and loading areas, and the first line is shall be equipped to screen parking loading activities from the street range, joining lots, basically from their view, and then B, give standards for the, um, for the, for the landscaping. And if there's a extra provision, if the parking lot abuts another parking lot with at least ten spaces, um, then the, then there, you're exempt from providing a buffer, basically, you don't need to buffer a parking lot against another parking lot. Shade trees, I have to provide it for every four parking spaces. And then there, um, there's one change for parking structures where, if you have a parking structure, you basically have to wrap it with another active use for fifty percent, and that's to avoid having a big void of nothingness at the street. And that's it for the section.
Any questions from the planning board members regarding this section?
I think I just had.
Oh, who would like to go first?
Go ahead, Michael.
All right, well, I just had one comment, I think I had sent in previously, that, um, for thirty dash fifty-nine dot twelve, I believe the minimum dimensions for an angled parking stall can be eighteen feet and not nineteen feet.
Yes, we'll make that note.
Yep, that's all I had.
Mike, that's already in here.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we made that change.
Oh, I apologize, I must, I'm, yep, okay.
Uh, John Moore?
Okay, page one, and these questions are just, very short answers needed, uh, single-family residents needs two parking spaces, two-family residents needs three, why wouldn't it be four?
Because we use the standard that we've had.
Well, if the standard for a single family is two, and now it's a double family, you get a break, I don't know, I think it's a lousy standard, whatever, uh, retail including takeout, subs and services, one parking space per two, just explain that to me quickly, please.
I'm sorry, John, which section?
I, I'm sorry, same page, uh, two dash A, retail, including. Retail, including takeout food establishments, one parking space per two hundred and fifty gross feet of floor space. So if I opened up a restaurant now, a takeout food place, open up a Chinese restaurant on Cookman Avenue, I gotta provide this type of parking?
No, because Cookman's in its own redevelopment area.
Okay, so where is this applied to?
Well, the B district.
Just big.
Well, no, because retail's permitted in the B.
Well, where does draft parking and loading standards update for Asbury Park apply to? Where in the city?
Um, John, can you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry. Where do draft parking and loading standards update for Asbury Park apply to? What parts of the city?
The whole city, but I use the the B district as an example because that's where, you know, where retail's permitted.
I, John, to further answer your question, I think what you're getting at, the redevelopment plans typically have their own parking standards in them, so they override this.
Okay. Maybe that should be on the top someplace. Uh, go to page two, please. L, motor vehicle repair garage. No, I'm sorry, K, motor vehicle service stations. You think that's the right number? I don't see any of this happening.
Excuse me, are we omitting motor vehicle stations as permitted uses?
Yeah, but I think it might be good to keep a parking standard in there because if you, if someone goes to the zoning board for the use and you keep a parking standard in there, they have to abide by that parking standard.
Right, okay, I get it. Okay.
But, um,
or an enlargement or a change to an existing one.
Right. Um, so, John, you're thinking we should rethink that?
I'm just, I'm just spitballing. I'm thinking like if I was like multimillionaire just wanted to open up a motor vehicle service station just because I like working on cars, and it's only got two bays, I gotta have all these parking spots? But like Jack said, if we eliminate it, I don't even know why we're keeping it, man. No problem, uh.
But I was gonna say, because the reason it's so high, when we say parking spaces, is really places where the cars to be serviced are parked.
Okay. Page three, uh, V, theme entertainment centers. So originally, before I figured out it wasn't the beachfront, I put down Silver Ball, so it's the beachfront's out. And now, so then I put down showroom. But I guess that's out because it's a different state. Where the heck would a theme entertainment center go because in a district that doesn't already have parking?
Right, but one of the things like I said is if it's not permitted and someone goes for use variance, they have to apply these parking standards. It's another, rather than none, and then the board, the zoning board doesn't have any guidance.
Okay, so we're just covering our whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, same, same page, last, uh, sentence, A, no more than thirty-five percent of the parking spaces required by these regulations shall be for compact cars. My first, and I could be wrong now because of the way everybody's going, I thought thirty-five percent was too high. But maybe that's the standard throughout the country? I don't know. How'd you get to thirty-five percent?
Um, it was, it was there. This was something we didn't touch. But you're right, this is a tough one because, um, depending who, who the who the audience is, I shouldn't say what's the audience, the user. If it's a family, they may not have a compact car. If it's a young person, they probably have a compact car. So this is, um,
is that a standard number in other cities? I mean, and we're sticking with it? And I have no problem. Again, I thought it was too high, but if you say, hey, John, that's what every town, the tops, and I have no problem with it. It's just something that's a bit there.
No, other towns-
And we're gonna keep it.
Other towns, I've seen it lower, but it's also, again, depending on where automobile sale trends are at the time. And again, who your population is, meaning like, do we see a lot of SUV owners in Asbury Park?
I do.
So then maybe we'll reconsider, we should reconsider that.
Okay, no problem. I just asked, uh, thank you, that's all I have.
But, but Michelle, on that same vein that you're talking about, wouldn't it be, would this be like something that if, 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 uh, if there's like a, some building going up that we wouldn't want in order for, um, the developer to be able to get more spaces, we don't want more than thirty-five percent being compact because because then a person that doesn't have, many people don't have compact cars, and they're just trying to get more spaces in the same in the same area. Is that what? No, I think John is saying we should lower the number to not more than
Correct, Barbara, that, I agree with you, Barbara. I was looking to lower the number, I thought thirty-five was too high, where, you know, again, yeah, somebody builds a building, they got two hundred parking spots, and all of a sudden thirty-five percent of them can be, maybe that number is too high. So seventy of the two hundred.
So let's lower it. Yeah, I think that that may be a good idea if perhaps, um, Donna and Michael can help with what number that should be. I was gonna say twenty percent. But Donna and Michael?
I mean, I would think these numbers were originally drafted with either ITE or Urban Land Institute parking standards and those, that's what we should refer to. That's just my opinion, but I, to me, thirty-five didn't seem like a high number, but I think we can revisit.
Right, it's just, it's just, once we take a, or, or you can also go back and just a suggestion is that we've had many plans come through here with how many compact cars, how many compact spaces are put into a lot. You know, is that, somehow I'm not thinking it's thirty-five percent, but you know, what's that number? Is it twenty-five? Is it? So, in other words, we have to come up with a number that makes sense, that has some teeth behind it, like logic behind it. And maybe, maybe that that group that you spoke about, Mike, did say thirty-five percent. Is that what we want in our, in our town? Do we want to encourage compact cars? Should we? Sure we do. But I also don't want to have too many compact spaces where people can't fit their cars when they buy, you know, into a development.
This is, this is Donna. So, um, the question I have now is, uh, so right under that thirty-five percent threshold uh, is when you can apply it, and that's you have to have at least fifty spaces in your development before you're allowed to do compact spaces. And that's another thing we've seen in previous applications where they're using compact spaces, but they don't have more than fifty parking spaces in their developments. So do we want to still have that fifty-car threshold for the use of compact spaces?
Yeah, because, because that's over, that's over like fifteen spaces that have to be compact.
Right, but we're also not getting developments with fifty parking spaces in them.
We have a couple of applications with more than fifty. I'm throwing out the beachfront.
Well, right, those are beachfront, but, um,
No, 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 I'm thrown at the beachfront. I can think of a couple right off the top of my head. I can think of Memorial Drive. The guy wants a hundred and twenty or something, and the other one, uh, I believe the ones on, uh, Memorial and Bangs and, uh, down there, it'd be more than fifty.
Yep.
So, so can can you take a look at that, Michelle? If, I don't know, if Mike can help with that, or if- Yeah, no, we'll look at that.
Yeah, I think, I think we could take a quick look at the ULI and the ITE recommendations and with an eye towards whatever, where they're at, maybe looking a little lower.
Thank you, and I think maybe the point I'm I'm thinking in my head is like, truthfully, guys, people buying seven hundred thousand dollar condos ain't driving a Volkswagen.
Anything else that anybody has? On this, any other, any member comments on this section? Or questions? No? Okay, let's open it up to the public for any questions regarding this testimony. I see Paul. Oh, no, no. Okay, um, phone number ending in three five zero, hand is raised. Please unmute.
Oh, yeah, Ernest, I think always four hundred D. Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, Sandtender. I think after homeowner and living in Asbury fifteen years, I'm a semi-professional for understanding parking quandaries in Asbury. And I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Alonso, in the definition, uh, you, you mentioned that, uh, you're gonna waive some things and allow parking lots, I guess, on just about any kind of property to no longer need separations? They could be like touching, like, like one house's rear parking lot can actually abut without separation the neighbor's parking lot, should they both get approved? Is that what you're modifying it to mean?
Meaning you don't have to do a landscape buffer.
Right, is that your modification?
But this for, this for parking lots?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean.
No, you asked for single, you asked for single-family houses.
Okay.
Listen, you asked for single-family houses, and that's not what she was talking about. She was talking about parking lots themselves.
You mean parking lots for commercial application?
Yes.
Would that include convention hall?
No.
Okay. Would that include, uh, the central business district?
Hmm, no, they have their own state-
Okay, okay. Well, so then can you just give me one example of the design standard parking change that you're removing for separation between adjoining parking lots? Can you just tell me one in Asbury that this would apply to?
I can't because I can't name two that adjoin.
So then why, then would you make a change?
Because this is a better regulation.
For something that doesn't exist?
That may exist in the future.
Oh, okay, so, so you're making changes for something that may exist in the future?
That's what zoning does.
Okay, and they wouldn't, you wouldn't be doing that based on, based on certain applications that you received?
I don't know what you mean by that.
In other words, you're, you're in a pretty powerful planning position here.
All right, okay.
And what I'm asking is, do you ever, you ever have act-
Mute him, mute him. The implication is, is that Michelle is doing something to favor applications that may be coming in or maybe before her. That's way beyond the scope of this cross-examination. Want to ask questions? Ask them. Don't ask questions like that. That's not gonna work. Unmute him.
Okay, uh, so you, um, you mentioned for a one-family, two parking spaces. And, and that means hence going forward, that means on the property. And then I believe, uh, it's been mentioned that for two-family, you'll only require three spots. And then I think it was asked of you, why three? And I think your reply was, that's just the way it's been. And, and my question is, things are changing in Asbury where congestion is beyond belief. So why would, why would a two-family only have to have three when that seems to add to the congestion in the streets? I mean,
Let her answer the question.
Okay, okay, okay.
We have not seen an issue with the two families providing inadequate parking. So it was not a standard that we thought that needed to be addressed.
Okay, so it's your testimony that you have not seen issues with multiple family, two families having difficulty with meeting parking standards. And, and I think you just said you haven't seen any examples.
That cannot-
And, and, and the reason I ask that is because I sit in, or am attending a lot of meetings where it seems the whole bantering back and forth between builders, developers, and homeowners is how to get variances and exceptions for not enough parking, including to cut curbs. So my point is, you're saying that so far, you haven't seen any examples where not enough onsite parking for two families has come up?
Yes, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Many ti, a two-family has a driveway that goes along the side of the property to the rear that can fit more than three cars.
Okay, so is it your position that this trend in Asbury, based on these parking standards, is gonna be to start to allow people who have driveways, whether they're tandem or whatever, to start to be able to look at their backyard to pave it to make more parking spaces in the back? In other words,
No, because we now have an impervious, we have an impervious-
You didn't say that.
What? No, no.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that.
I thought the, I thought the statement was, they usually have a driveway that leads to the back where there's more parking.
It said side yard.
Side yard, in the driveway. She said nothing about-
Side yard. Okay. But what, again, I'm gonna ask again, am I incorrect in all the meetings that I sit in that some, some of the most ardent differences between parking are about-
She can't answer that. She can't answer that question.
Why? She's in the meeting.
She's not at all the meetings you're at. So how can she answer your question? She can't. Ask a different question.
Well, I don't agree with what you said, but I'll ask a different question.
Either you're gonna do it the way it's supposed to be done, or you're not gonna do it.
Oh, okay, Mr. Jack, why don't you take over? What are you, roasting now?
Never mind, he's out of order. This is at least the fourth or fifth warning. I suggest we mute him. He's out of order.
Uh, I don't see any other hands up for this section. So, uh, let's move on.
Can, can I ask, can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
It's John, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I mean, I hear some statements like, we're putting this in for the future, but then I hear like, well, we haven't seen that happen yet. I kinda agree, I do agree, like, a two-family, and I'm the one who raised it, should have four parking spaces for one family, has it? Because that's planning for the future, and everybody knows the biggest problem in Asbury Park is parking. Uh, maybe it will never happen, but at least it gives us some guidelines, and maybe they can apply for barriers or anything, but if we're planning for the future, the future says we have no parking. The present says we have that, so the future is just gonna get worse. Unless we all buy compact cars, and that's not gonna happen for another ten years, right, Michael?
What? No, so I-
Yeah, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. I just, I know, and I agree with you, I hope we get rid of cars in the future, but it's not gonna happen within the next three to five years, and this can be amended anytime we want to.
Yeah, I, I agree with your sentiment, except that I'll offer two counts-
Yeah, I I agree with your sentiment, except that I'll offer two counterpoints. One is. A two-family residence could have a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit, in which case that parking requirement would be. Three parking spaces, right? So that's one point, and then the second point is, if we do go ahead and make two-family residences have four parking spaces. Then we get into the, to the scenario where we're now kind of forcing more impervious coverage. On single-family lots, you know, not single-family lot, but small lots where, you know, stormwater is another ba- another issue that we have to balance. So. While I agree with you that, you know, requiring more spaces might be, might solve one problem and might create others, so that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I I I see where you're coming from, but we could have. A two-family with four bedrooms and four bedrooms, if the lot's big enough.
And, uh, true, true. One, one more.
And then.
Go ahead.
And then if we're looking to get away with impervious, or maybe, maybe it's two-family with three with an asterisk next to it, like, one has to be a a. A one-bedroom apartment, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead with your point.
No, one more point I'll make is that two-family residences are gonna be probably predominant, not in areas where. There is a significant parking crunch, right? So. There might be more in the residential areas where they're a little further from commercial areas where, you know, street parking may not be. Obviously, it's it's a problem all over the city, but it's not as significant in some of the more far-out residential areas. That's all I'm saying.
So so then should we consider, I'm just asking that, that the areas that this covers? That this. That the parking and loading standards cover. Should we, should we take a look and say, does it make sense for us to go up to four? Because we know or or not, but because of what it applies to. Not because we have so many redevelopment areas. Should we just look at the ones that it does apply to and doesn't make sense for us to stay with three? I don't think that there's any harm in looking at that.
I have no problem with that.
Correct.
I I I, like I said, I think, you know, I wouldn't have a problem if it, if the board felt strongly that it had to be four, so.
Okay, um, I know.
Thank you.
And, uh, and you have anything else, John?
No, I just thank you.
Okay, um.
The, Matt, the last thing is the map.
Okay.
Uh, because the map is is supposed to, is part of the package.
Okay.
Give me a second with the share screen. Stop share. Pull up the right document. I don't even know.
Hey, Michelle?
Yeah.
Do you think the map's gonna be long, or do you think it's gonna be a short one?
Short.
Okay, thank you.
Because like we, member of the public that had, yeah.
Because I just wanna make sure. Go ahead, John.
If it was gonna be long, I would say. Let's get the public comment tonight, because then we're gonna have to change it, have another meeting anyway, and we could do the map then, but, uh, if you think it's gonna be short, knock it out.
I do.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to be able to go over the map, get public comment, because some people have been waiting a very long time to to give us input. And. I I think we should just finish this up.
No problem, that's. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna be an hour conversation.
If it, if it does, we'll we'll continue, we will, we'll skip the map if it ends up being long.
Right, because I I agree with Barbara, there's been people on B. Paul and everybody that.
Right.
Comment from the beginning of the meeting that have been sitting here, uh, ten twenty-five.
Right, this is more of a technicality, because clearly, when you make changes, like, to the zone districts. You change the map. What I wanna.
You're on.
What?
You're on, I'm wasting, I'm wasting time by talking about it, so you're on, thank you.
So I just, this is the map, showing the Bs, districts, showing the districts. I want to note. Truthfully, there's been, and the relabeling of the P one, the P, the P two. We took the supermarket on Memorial and we put it in the B district. That's the big change. Any questions about this map?
Why'd you make that change?
Because it was in the I district.
Okay, thank you.
Does the, uh, board have any questions for, uh, regarding the map? Okay, um, let me take a look to see if there's anyone from the public that would like to have, if they have any questions. About the map that was just testified to, about the. The one business that was moved to be. Okay, uh, we have, um, phone number ending with three fifty, uh, regarding that one change that was made. Okay?
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNully, four hundred D. Lake Drive, apartment five, the Asbury Park, New Jersey. So. Uh, the supermarket on Memorial. In the map was changed from I to B, and why is that?
Because it's a supermarket, it's non-industrial use, it fits in with the B district.
And that, for how long has it been, uh, I?
I don't know how long that supermarket's been there.
A long time, I think. And, uh, the question is, um, and what is the motivation for changing it?
Makes sense.
To who?
To the zoning. It's a supermarket.
To the supermarket?
It's a supermarket and it's a restaurant. Those are businesses. B is for business, I, L. I. is for light industrial.
Okay, oh, so there's a restaurant in the supermarket?
Yes.
In the parking lot of the rest of the supermarket, there's a restaurant.
Oh, right, up, up, upfront, yeah, I I I know what you mean, but, so, ano- another words. A longstanding change. With nothing's changed at that supermarket, there's still that, whatever it was that. Was on the front that closed, now it's open, the market's been the same, I think, forever, it's just changed the name. It's always been I, but you're saying now it's being changed to B? Because it just makes sense, and I'm just wondering. What makes sense about it?
Do you have any other questions? Your question was asked, Ms. Alonso answered it. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I thought could elaborate on it just makes sense a little bit, other than that there's a restaurant there.
That is, that is her testimony.
Okay, okay, if that's, if that's as much as you wanna answer, fine, I'm done. I'll wait, now I'd like to make a comment.
Hmm, you have to wait.
Hold on.
I know, I know, I know, for the comments.
All right, City Historian has their hand up with, what, um. Question do you have about the movement of that one? Um, business.
Hello.
Hello.
Am I on?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I I just have a general question. Could this map be rendered? Uh, in a more detailed manner, like with finer lines and things? It it's really poorly rendered when you enlarge it on a computer. I don't know, uh, what the dot per inch values are for creating this, but I just think that this should be done better. Can that happen?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state it this way. It was done in GIS and converted to a PDF for this presentation.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. All right, would would it be possible perhaps to generate two different maps? A zoning map that indicates all local zoning, and then a separate zoning map with all of the redevelopment overlays identified? So that you can. What?
This has, what's an overlay? We have one redevelopment plan that's an overlay, and it's identified.
That didn't answer my question.
What's your, repeat it then.
Would it be possible to generate two different zoning maps? One that has all the underlying zoning, the base zoning identified. That way, the parks, municipal property, everything would be identified, as I. Was asking about earlier, and then another one that has all of the redevelopment areas on it.
No, that that's confusing, because this is the official zoning map. And if you make a map with other zones in it, it's confusing.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Warner, though, though I appreciate your questions, that really doesn't have anything to do with what Michelle testified to?
Well, she's showing the zoning map. That's testimony in and of itself, and I'm asking questions about it. Thank you.
That's correct, and this is more properly directed in a comment where you recommend.
Okay. Yeah. Good, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? No other hands raised? Okay, can I get a motion to, um, open up public comment?
Move it, Mike.
Second.
We have the timer? Anywhere?
APTV of the timer?
Okay, uh, let's see. Anybody have their hands raised? Paul, I see that you've been waiting patiently. Go for it. Mr. Serpico will swear you in.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, yes, hello, this is Paul McEvelie.
Okay, okay, Paul, please raise your right hand, and I'll take your word for it if you tell me that you've done so.
Yes, I have.
You solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and, uh, your address or your business address within the city.
Yes, Paul McEvelie, M. C. E. V. as in Victor, I. L. Y. Eight Ten Fourth Avenue, Interfaith Neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and thank you for your service and your stamina for, uh, handling three, three and a half plus hour meetings. Uh, my comments tonight, uh, relate to accessory dwelling units. I would like to add my voice in support of ADUs. Um, the comments relate to permitted and conditional uses in the residential zones. And relate also to the recently passed Affordable Housing Amendment, or Ordinance, that the council passed. That ordinance was intended to incent development of net additional affordable units for low-to-moderate and middle-income households. It created an overlay district near D. Lake Drive that represents a minuscule portion of the city, maybe one percent. And frankly, has insufficient incentives to convince for-profit developers to actually take advantage of the high densities offered in that zone. So the city wants to see more affordable units built, but the overlay zone frankly is not going to yield the new, the units the city wants and needs. The residential zones, one, two, and three, which look to be more than sixty percent of the city, are nearly fully developed. With significant restrictions on permitted and conditional uses. With the cost of land, cost of construction, real estate taxes being so high, and with the resale prices currently going through the roof. These zoning restrictions in effect perpetuate the systemic issues that today are making homeownership for low to moderate. And middle-income families nearly impossible in this city. We need to give the homeowner or that family that wants to realize the dream of homeownership. The opportunity to create generational wealth through homeownership, and that will require the ability to generate income from their properties. You do this by allowing accessory dwelling units, garage apartments, for example, that will generate income for the homeowner. I offer, for example, our Parkview AP project, principal residence with a detached, uh, one-bedroom garage apartment. Um, the all-in cost per lot for this project will come to about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's how we set our price points. We net to zero, no profits for us as a non-for-profit developer. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price with ten percent down, the monthly carry is gonna be thirty-two to thirty-five hundred dollars. Not affordable for low to moderate income buyers. If you add a thousand to twelve hundred dollars in rental income for that apartment, all of a sudden it becomes affordable. For a young cop, a young fireman, a teacher, or a city, a city, uh, worker. These should be allowed within the residential district. Um, you create an additional affordable unit, you create the opportunity for homeownership and generational wealth. So I ask you to please consider, uh, accessory dwelling units in all of the residential zones. And if you decide to put together a working group to look at this, I would be happy to participate. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Um, our next, uh, for, uh, our next, uh, public com- for public comment, ending in three five zero?
Oh, yeah, hi, Ernest McNully, M. I. G. N. O. L. I. Four hundred D. Lake Drive, apartment five, the Asbury Park, New Jersey. How long is the public comment, uh, minutes? Three?
Yes.
Three, okay. So, um.
Oh, wait a minute, you gotta raise your right hand.
Yes, okay, I am.
Okay, you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You already stated your name and spelled it for us and your address, so you can start.
Okay, uh, I'd, I'd like to share my experience as a homeowner here for almost fifteen years. In that, I I I find it disheartening. That fifteen thousand people living in the city, I I I don't know if it's sixteen thousand or fifteen thousand. That so few people are involved in these important things. These meetings, these variances, these rewriting of plans, et cetera, et cetera. And something like an accessory dwelling unit, which basically means. Be- because of the rising prices, rising assessments, rising taxes. We're not gonna say to homeowners, oh, why don't you build a, an apartment above your garage? You know, take in two thousand a month, and then we'll keep the, uh, increased assessments affordable. When in fact, the problem is not enough apartments on garages or accessory dwelling units. The problem is the annual constant assessments that are just driving this city in terms of density. Into unaffordability. I mean, you talk about it, but when you walk around Asbury. There, there is no way that this city is not becoming exclusive to upper income. I mean, uh, unless I need glasses, I don't see it. I don't see economy cars. I see big, massive SUVs, Range Rovers. I see a city buying all big police cars. All the departments buying big SUVs. I don't see any electric vehicles. So what I see is a lot of hypocrisy, and this whole notion that, you know, we'll keep kicking the can down the road. Every time we allow one person to have a driveway with two cars. And then they wanna put up another building on an undersized lot, and then they wanna go in the backyard and start creating parking lots. Which are gonna disturb the neighbors, add impervious surface, that this ball is gonna keep going. Depending on the power of the developer and the attorney for them that comes in, and how sophisticated they are. At, in my opinion, badgering these boards to the point where you just become submissive. You say, you know what, oh, you know what? Uh, uh, I, I, I can't take it. Okay, we're gonna approve it. And I've even heard developers say to the board, you know what, if you don't approve me, you know, for this. Sixty units above a, a place with fifteen parking spaces, you know what I do for this city? You know, I'll never forgive you. And you acquiesce, and then you allow them to pull tricks constantly, like divide their own land. Come back in other names. I mean, how many names does I Star have now? The Asbury Partners? My three minutes are up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Uh, next person up, uh, that has a hand raised is the City Historian. Um.
Hello, Warner.
Greetings, Jack.
Please raise your right hand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Of course.
Please state your name, spell it for the record, and your affiliation with the city.
Uh, Warner Baumgartner, W. E. R. N. E. R. B. A. U. M. G. A. R. T. N. E. R. Officially appointed city historian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, first of all, I must say that I'm profoundly disappointed. In that during out this entire process till now, no one has. in that during, uh, this entire process till now, no one has reached out to me for comment before the fact or input into this process. The, the city is blessed to have someone like me that's been here for over forty years advocating for preservation and good design practices and, uh, protecting public assets. With that said, there are two things that concern me the most. One is eliminating underlying zoning from the public record. This city was built with the public in mind, originally designed by James Bradley, setting aside public spaces uh, in perpetuity, uh, in theory, but now the city sees fit to remove some of those designations for things like parkland, uh, municipal property being designated specifically with the claim that redevelopment areas supersede them. Yes, legally they may, but I think you need to maintain the public's access to information that says certain parts of the city are in fact public property and municipal property. On it, the other note is the design regulations. Number one, I think you should not call them design regulations. You're going in a bad direction by changing these things to be in the design section of the code. These were intended and are, in fact, the only official designation of historic districts. They belong in zoning, they belong enforceable. I fought for forty years to make these codes enforceable. Now you're seeing fit to weaken that and put them in design section where they could be called a design waiver. That's completely contrary to the master plan, which is recommending stronger enforcement and stronger recognition of the city's heritage and architectural history. Some of the board members have used that argument and the word historic, uh, character to great effect. Well, stand up and, and make that happen. This needs to be called Historic District Regulations, and it needs to remain in zoning so that it's perfectly clear that it's fully enforceable, and the city is intent to move forward with protecting its character as per the, uh, the master plan. So those are the two main things, and they deal all with public property. Public property, historic assets, community character, these are all things I hear about, but in reality, it seems like you're going in the wrong direction with some of these things. I do suggest you create two different zoning maps, one with all the base underlying zoning, and then a separate map with all of the redevelopment overlays. It's just gotten way too complicated uh, for the average person to ask for a zoning map and understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I don't see any other hands raised. Can I get a motion to close public comment?
Move it more.
Secondly.
Second, Yvonne?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, hearing none, ayes have it.
All right, so it looks like we have, uh, a modification set up to be made that we, we talked about. So it looks like we'll have to, uh, carry this, uh, application to another date. Uh, the question is how soon? Um, because we have, um, we might have an opening on the twenty-second. I don't know if that's too soon or on the first.
So, so this, before we get into dates, you know, from, in order to move forward, it seems like we've gone through all of the ordinances. We've got the public, we've got the board comments, and I think it would be, be worthwhile for, uh, my office and Michelle to attempt to make all of the changes that were recommended tonight and get back on some of these issues. One of those is the, is the compact parking issue, uh, which we can make a suggestion about. Um, but then it might be worthwhile, after we do that, prior to coming back to the board for recommendation and final review, that the ordinance committee review those changes to make sure that they are there. That would be my suggestion.
Well, we could also, um, I, I might, I might, uh, I mean, I can defer to our, um, members that perhaps if the changes are made, you send us the changes and we, we can review them, or I mean, we can also meet for like uh, an hour just to have that discussion, just to verify if that makes, that, that makes it easier.
Yeah, I think, I think that they, you know, it might be interesting, i- if we had a, if we had something where we couldn't decide or we were in between, and then the committee would be helpful. Otherwise, it could just come back to the board once we make the changes.
No, that's, I, I, I don't think that there's a problem with us getting together with Zoom these days. We can get something up. Does that work with you, um, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, so then at this point, we don't have a date that we want to target?
As soon as possible. We have to have one.
All right, so the, the soonest one, um, that I'm seeing at this point is probably March first. Or the twenty-second of February, one of the two. It depends on where the stormwater ordinance hits us. I'm not,
Don't, don't base it around that. Base it around when you guys can meet and as quick as you can get back to it.
Yeah, I mean, can, today we, today's the fourth, do you think that we would have something ready for the twenty-second?
Twenty-second is a Monday?
Yes.
Yes.
The Monday, it's a, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. Do you think that we could have the modifications by then? If not, the next available is three one.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we say, say it? And if you're not, we'll carry.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Okay, so why don't you say that it's the twenty-second? We'll have it, we'll bring it up on the twenty-second, cause, uh, that shouldn't be a, uh, a long meeting.
So moved.
Okay. We'll carry it to the twenty-second with no further notice?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, who made the motion?
Manzella. Gallo, a second.
One second. That would be the twenty-second of February, correct?
Correct.
Okay. John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Barbara Krazak?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yes.
Matters carried without further notice, uh, to February twenty-second at seven PM.
All right, I'd just like to bring something up in, um, uh, regarding the meeting on Monday. At this point, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, that we do not have enough, we don't have enough information for us to have a meeting on Monday at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, Michelle, can I ask you about that? I spoke to Kevin Kennedy after I spoke to Barbara, uh, telling him that I understood that the redevelopers agreement or the redevelopers designation is, is still incomplete. He says that he in fact signed, his client signed on to the redevelopers agreement, and that he was supposed to call you and Mark this afternoon. Did he call you?
No, he didn't.
Okay, well, then he's gonna probably call me back tomorrow. I don't, I don't know what other deficiencies there might be, but I assume you do.
Right, so then what we can do, may I suggest that as of, as of right now, we're still having it, but be aware that you may get an email that says we are not, that meeting is canceled either on Friday or Monday. Maybe cancel the, either one, we may find out on Friday or Monday, depending on Michelle's office. So just a heads up. But as of right now, we're having it.
Okay.
Although, although I'm not, I, I have a feeling he will not, I mean, he's not gonna be able to fulfill the requirements by,
Okay, so then, just a heads up, you'll get an official notice soon as Michelle's office knows for a hundred percent sure. Okay, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Hey, Barbara, 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 Barbara?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I, I gotta say two things, please. Uh, Paul, if you're still on there, I gotta correct you. Uh, it wasn't three and a half when you said it, it was four and a half, we're going on five. Uh, thank you again, and Michelle, one hell of a great job tonight. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was, I want to thank everyone for all the hours they put in tonight, on top of all the other meetings that they have to have. So thank you, everyone, tonight, and excellent comments, excellent questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks.
I'm sorry we went long, but it was worth it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Me.
Second. Second.
Good night.
John Moore?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
No, ayes have it.
Okay.
Good night.